February four, Board Supervisor Special Session.
It does make a huge difference for you sitting there. Yeah. They could actually hear you, hear you better when you were standing at the whiteboard. People could hear you well as opposed to when you're sitting there and not directly into it and like leaning back a little more. It was, it's weird.
That's, that's odd.
I want a new mic.
Yeah, I hear you. Look at you all a little pal.
All right. Board of Supervisors, Special Session. Roll call Jake.
Keesha, John, or?
Here.
Mark, Remy?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve this morning's agenda, budget?
A move to approve today's agenda?
I'll second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Very good. We're ready to kick off. Day five of the ordeal.
Of the ordeal.
It's good. We're gonna just title it that way from now on, yeah, the ordeal. Yeah. EMA this morning.
Good morning.
Jeff is here to talk to the Board of Supervisors. Jeff has his own board. I sit on that board as well, but glad you're here this morning and tell us what's going on in Emergency Management.
Appreciate the opportunity. I've got a total of five slides. Gonna cover EMA nine one one and then just a real quick open discussion with you about the PIO role. While you're all three here in, in open session before we conclude. So on the Emergency Management side, you can see on the screen basically listed the projects that we're going to be doing or are doing in two thousand and twenty-two. And the open grants. I mentioned the open grants because each of those has an associated set of quarterly reports or final reports that we're managing within the office. So just a little indicator of the, the workload. Of note, the mass notification switch over. So the state changed vendors last year. They actually changed. June fifteenth was effective July first. We weren't in a position here with the, with Emily being out of the office on maternity leave. We were not in a position to make that happen. So I renewed a one year with the existing vendor. So that, that year will expire in, in June of this year. So we will need to be switched over to the new mass notification system. Emily's been doing some training on that, getting up to speed, kind of doing some work behind, in the, in the background. We will be working with the HR department here in the next month to move all of the county employees onto that system. So if we would need to notify all the county employees, we're able to do that. That was an ask of the courthouse security committee. And was a recommendation in, in that evaluation we had done. So we will have that ready to go. Had a couple EMS leaders come forward and ask for a full-scale exercise. We've largely kind of not done many exercises since the onset of COVID. They recognize the need to get back in the, in the full swing of things. Because largely because they've got so many new members. But the school shooting that took place earlier in the week, uh, just outside Minneapolis kind of hit home and resonated with them that we need to be, you know, we, we can't afford to fall asleep. So we will be working hard. Normally I would allow a full year for a full, full-scale exercise for us to plan it and conduct it. I don't want to wait that long. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to work with them and, and make that happen in September. So it's a condensed timeframe, but I think we can pull it off. The last bullet there, the personal preparedness initiative rollout. So within my office, I, I talked to Mark a few months ago. With Emily assuming the PIO role, it gives us an opportunity within the office to kind of change how we're going to do, how we do personal preparedness. COVID was a prime example of every measure that we can get our residents or businesses to take. So they're not so reliant on us when things go bad is, is a positive. During COVID, people kind of got, in our opinion, kind of got burned out on just the one-page social media, social media push. So we've kind of decided to do some in-person stuff. Emily's already done. She did a career day a couple of weeks ago with this at the school. So we're actually gonna get out and, and meet face-to-face with people. We've bought some props, some simple things that people, businesses can, can buy over the course of time to make themselves better prepared. We've bought some of those. She's gonna take some of those props out with her. So our hope is to go out and meet with the Kiwanis group and, and have Emily actually get some of these props in their hands so they can see that they're tangible, they're not terribly expensive, and they don't have to necessarily purchase a thousand dollars at once. It can be a gradual purchase over time. So that's something that is a, is a change for us and, and we'll be doing. But looking forward to seeing that tick off.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
On those full-size exercises you're talking about, is that focused on just any particular subject or is it a variety of subjects?
So we haven't even, it literally happened, the request came literally this week. I haven't even had a chance to talk to the sheriff or law enforcement yet. But my expectation would be that all of the players will, will want to participate in it. EMS has some objectives that they want to test. One, one is mask care.
Okay.
Triage. Our expectation is that the hospitals will also want to jump on board.
I just didn't know what the subject matter that you guys were focusing on.
So the way I run an exercise, Steve, is, is I let the, what do they want to test? The objectives drive the scenario. So I have an idea, but until we've heard from law enforcement and until we've heard from the hospitals, I don't necessarily want to say publicly what the scenario is gonna be.
Okay.
But you can bet that it's gonna be a mask care.
Yeah, variety of scenarios.
Yeah.
Okay.
So getting right to the budget, the ask of you in this year is the same as it has been. Be a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Notice, most notable change in that is I've always followed your, your guidance as far as when we prepare a budget. I did that again this year. But I asked for a six percent. My intention is to do three percent raises per your guidance. And take one and a half, the, take one and a half percent and implement some goals within the department. There's just two of us, obviously, in the EMA side. So it, it doesn't take much for us to get overwhelmed. But if we can work together and, and really accomplish things, I want to have just a little bit of money to, to reward Emily for, for when we reach goals. The other one and a half percent is in order to get her up to speed and to give myself a break occasionally, my intention is to have her assume occasional weekends where she's got the duty for the office. And I want to compensate her for any, any of that because that really wasn't part of what she agreed on when, when we hired her. So just want a little, a few dollars in, in a fund to be able to reward her and immerse her in, in the job. So that I can take a vacation. So any questions on that?
Little shock to the vacation ideas, Jeff.
I know. I'm, I'm asking a lot.
Man, man.
The other big thing that our office runs is, is the hazmat team. We're currently sitting with twenty-three members. Recruited at least two more during the meeting last week. So we very easily should be at twenty-five and there's, I'd love to get three, three or four more on. We've got thirty-six hours of training scheduled for them in the county year twenty-two. No, no responses last, no official responses last year. Any questions on that? Okay, jump into the nine-one-one side if that's permissible with everybody. So one of the things that we've been tracking since Emily came on board was trying to keep track of, you know, what, what amount of work are we getting done? This, I think, gives you a pretty good indicator of, of what the department has done over, over the years. The blue line is the address markers. The orange line is the street name signs. The gray is the new addresses. And then a, a total, the orange line represents a total for each year. There's still a few discrepancies in, in the numbers as far as how we're tracking them, but we'll continue to work those, those bugs out. What's interesting is Randy came on and I believe it was seventeen, eighteen?
Somewhere around there.
Yep, and the amount of work that he's getting done by far exceeds what we, what we were doing previously. So I'm, I'm pleased with that. The next slide will show you that our expenses, which are the gray line there at the bottom, have actually gone down. So we're, we're getting more done using less money. So I'm, I'm very happy with that. The orange line is the revenues, fairly steady. The, the peak there in May of seventeen was a grant program, one-year grant. So increased revenues, increased expenses correlating to that grant. Fund balance you can see is in excess of a million right now. My expectation is that the board will take, undertake some sort of project this year to spend some of that down. You can see the amount of time it takes to accumulate, it has taken to accumulate that. So there will need to be some caution that we don't bottom it out or, you know, completely empty it out. But the statewide, the, the nine-one-one, the state nine-one-one program manager announced at the nine-one-one council meeting last month that statewide there is a lot of money sitting in local nine-one-one boards. And it would behoove all of those local boards to reduce that where they can before it draws unwarranted attention from legislators. So my, my advice to the board is gonna be figure out a project and figure out an amount that they're comfortable with and, and we move forward. So I just, I wanted to put that up there for you guys because I know the fund balance is, is in, you know, your, your accounts. So you see it. I want to give you some idea of where we were at. And then obviously while we're at it, show you the, the expenses. I'm, I'm very, very happy that we've been able to increase the amount of work, almost double while maintaining or even decreasing our expenses.
Jeff, what are the, what are the top three needs for nine-one-one that would utilize this kind of fund balance?
So we've switched both piece apps over to the, it's called the State Shared Services System or Network. That's where all the nine-one-one equipment is. So we're essentially a remote off of some state computers. So that has reduced our costs. Emily's been working hard with Windstream. We've, we've gone from paying over three thousand dollars a month to Windstream to about six hundred. And our expectation is that here before long, we're gonna build, reduce that to zero. So not to be frayed from your question.
Right.
We're trying to get our expenses down and eliminated because we don't need to pay for those local trunks on the new system. So that has greatly reduced our, our cost. So Mark, to answer your question directly, I, the from speaking to the board members, from their, from their past meetings, it's, it's gonna be radio-related. There, there was some discussion recently about maybe the first thing that we need to address is the paging, the VHF paging because frankly, if they can't receive an alert, nothing, or the best radio system in the world doesn't matter if they can't receive it. Pleasantville is largely in a kind of a black hole where they may or may not receive a page. That's just not good, period. So I, I would say communications. I would say probably at the top of that list is, is the paging. If we address the paging to everybody's satisfaction, then it'll make it easier to move forward with the, the radio part of it.
So how do you, how do you, just the radios themselves would help with that or?
So right now, currently, our
Tower or repeater, whatever you call it.
One of the dispatch centers sends out an alert for the pagers. It comes off of the core tower at, at South Overlook. What we probably need to do, since it's not realistic for us to build that tower higher to increase coverage, what we probably need to do is look at putting in some remote repeaters out in maybe the, the corners of the county to boost that signal so that the people in those areas receive it. Did that somewhat answer your question?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure how the best way for us to go about it is. Whether that's hiring consultant or just hiring a vendor and telling them we want it to be better. I'm not sure. I'm not letting the board decide that, but I would expect that's the first place that we'll go.
That could take your fund balance down.
Yeah. Obviously, anything communications related is expensive. We've actually got some communication stuff that's been on, on order since last summer. It's not even here yet. So kind of the same thing you've heard from some of the other department heads. I don't know when we're gonna get it. So that could, that could impact this, but worst-case scenario, we gotta dive in, find a project, identify a project, and then maybe the money's still sitting here in the fund a year from now. But we are at least taking strides toward implementing, purchasing a, a, a project. We do our part and control what we can control, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. If we can't get communications equipment, that's really not on us. We've done what we can control.
I got a question for you. On your hundred and fifty-five thousand that you're requesting, does that, that's not something, I'm just asking this because I don't know, that's not something you can reduce your fund from? Or is that just something, what is that? Is that your salaries? Is that your FICA? I mean, you know, I'm trying to figure out what it is.
Sorry, the, the hundred and fifty-five, the hundred and fifty-five is the ask of the Board of Supervisors that runs the entire department. Outside of a few grants, it runs the, it's the operations of this department.
So you can't use those funds that you've had, that you have, that are collecting, you know, that are, that are increasing. You can't use those for your guys'?
So on the, on the nine-one-one side, you know?
Okay, that's, that helps clarify for me.
Funds and there's very stringent rules that apply to how we can use the nine-one-one dollars.
Correct, okay.
And salaries outside of doing mapping and the thing, the very basic things we're doing draws an immediate.
And I prefer, I, I, I appreciate you telling me that because I also think the public needs to hear that too. Because they see a fund balance going up and then asking why, you know, you're asking for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So appreciate that.
Yeah, so sorry, I wasn't
No, 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 you're good.
But on, on the, the hundred and fifty-five is for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. Basically that runs, fifty of that runs the hazmat team. The remainder of it runs the rest of the office.
I think that when you're thinking about nine-one-one, to be more like public health.
Yeah.
That would be on your EMA side. Would, would there be an opportunity to increase like Kim does with her admin fees? Is that, does that opportunity exist in, on the EMA side?
So
To cover some of that one.
Three or four years ago, I asked the, the nine-one-one board to look at changing the cost that we charge for a new address. I mean, on our board, that, that's the sign. That's the, the post with the red, the red sign. At that time, it cost us in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars to build and install that sign. We were charging, I think, fifty. So over a span of a few years, the board agreed to step that up. I think we're, we're closer now, but that's actually gonna be one of the things that I'm gonna ask them this year again to do is step that up. I don't know why we don't want to get to a point where the fee that we're charging covers a hundred percent of our costs. And here's why. Because right now we're being asked and expected to provide new addresses for things like grain bins before a utility company will run, for example, electric service or a water service. Well, as it relates to nine-one-one, that fund balance comes one hundred percent from the one-dollar surcharge. A grain bin, a livestock water are never gonna generate a dollar per month in, in surcharge because they're not a telephone. So they're simply, what I'm trying to get is they're a draw. And they're drawing money away from, to me, what it, its intended purpose. So those costs need to be covered a hundred percent by
Well, most, most businesses cover their costs that are not business very long.
Yeah. The other part of it is right now, we currently, for life, we, so once a person pays that fee, we install the sign, we maintain it for life. We gotta get away from that. That, that's, that is a liability. When you look at long-term, we have somewhere around seventeen thousand signs that we're responsible for. We gotta find a way to, we can't be responsible forever and ever for a, a resident that every year knocks their sign down by pile, pile of snow on it.
Exactly.
We can't be responsible for, I mean, this happened in, in Tracy just last year. Randy went through and changed all the, the markers. And last fall, some, a resident in Tracy decided to burn their ditch and it melted the brand-new sign. We, the board can't be responsible for that. So I'm working on policies to recommend to the board to change that immediately. Want to make the nine-one-one dollars go as absolutely far as they can and for as close to their intended purpose as well we can, obviously. Any questions? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes, it does.
So there, there will be a shift. There, there could be some I don't want to say I'm expecting negative comments, but anytime you increase a fee. But the, the, the simple part of that is we're just trying to cover our costs. With regard to the PIO role, if you're, if you're okay with that, just wanted to have an open discussion with you. And I'm gonna turn it over to Emily if she can pipe in here too. She has worked hard on coming up with a kind of a communications plan for this year. Would ask all of the department heads and other employees that she reaches out to, to participate willingly and, and let's, let's improve our communication with the public. Let's do a better job of demonstrating to the public how we use our tax dollars. I think we're all on board with that. We are open to suggestions on how we do that. But we, that, that has been a conversation every time we've discussed it. We want to do a better job of, of demonstrating to the public how the tax dollars are used.
And that, and that, that brings up a good point. I appreciate that. I have had many people ask about the YouTube channel, about us as a Board of Supervisors so that they can actually see the video of it, whether it's, you know, through Zoom and then recorded and then put up on. I don't know what the cost would, that would be, but something maybe we could look into.
So
We must be entertaining versus listening to it through there.
The question that I would, that we would put back to you three is do you want it live or do you want it recorded and, and uploaded, including the video, at, at a later time?
See, I don't know what the cost, I don't know what the difference would be. That would be the question I would have.
I'm not the expert, but I'm not sure if there even would be a, a change in cost. We're already, we already
Probably an IT question too.
Are maintaining the YouTube channel. Jake's staff is putting the audio up there. So the only difference would be we're
Editing.
Editing. We're, and we're putting the, the video with the audio. And then, and then again, it's, do you want it live or post-released? So that's something for you three to roll over on.
It all depends upon whether, you know, when we, if we were to do live, we couldn't tell who this, you know? So I mean, yeah, that would be the only thing, I guess. And I don't know what
I actually think that is incorrect because we were able to, I believe, essentially you continue to use Zoom as the platform and link it where it actually just simulcast it to the YouTube channel at the same time. I'm not sure it would look any different in here for, for you folks.
So what we could do, Emily, is I think we could run a test of a live YouTube channel. And we could run a test with our Zoom as well. Because I, I think you're right. I think we can make this work and, and
I just didn't know about signing in. Do you see what I mean? If we're worried about knowing who's watching it or whoever, but I guess they can't speak, so they're just listening. So
The way I understand it, the YouTube piece of that would be secondary. It would continue to be the Zoom and normal operations as you've
Yeah, we wouldn't, we would not see YouTube up here. We see only Zoom up here. And the YouTube would function on somebody's computer as we're talking and, and whatever cameras we were using for that. So we can run a test of that and see if that's something we
I know Warren County, I, they, they do, I think, live.
Well, and Ascot has their own closed-circuit channel. So but yeah, we could try something like that. Test it out, see if it works. Yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe people want to see us. We're focused in on Jake a lot.
Yeah.
Lots of zooming in on Jake.
Get rid of this camera right here.
What?
It's probably a function, get rid of IT as well and through the website, like we have, we're putting the PowerPoints up on now, head. So, yeah, the PowerPoints. When the new website came in, I mean, it'll take over.
Are you fine?
They had that capability. We just weren't quite doing it yet. So we're starting with the PowerPoints up there. So you can go back and see, like, if you want to see a draft like this or something like that. I would assume, making an assumption that there could be a link through our website.
Well, let's, let's run a test. Let's talk to Andrew and I'm sure if we want to try something like that. I don't think the cost would be.
Yeah. It's just a matter of if you guys want it to be live. I think if you want it to be live, if you want it to be put up post, post-meeting, those are just questions.
No, I think that's a good idea.
You could get a couple million subscribers to your channel and it actually might generate revenue for you.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
One of those YouTube gold plaques for so many subscribers. We'll have to spice it up a little bit though. Jason, you gotta come in, maybe, you know?
Do TikToks.
Yeah, yeah. See, a whole new revenue generation component here.
So we purchased a, a GoPro camera with all the, the fixings for Emily. She'll be carrying that around. Intend to use this. I, we, Mark and I have challenged her to make this. There, there's an opportunity here to create the brand for the PIO role in Marion County, and we've challenged her to make it as, make it platinum, make it gold, make it as, as good as, as we can do it. But it's, it's gonna take feedback from, and interaction from, from you folks as the leaders.
You gonna put that on your head and walk that around or what?
Well, it's gonna take, it's gonna take feedback and I would say this, especially to all the electives. Cooperation. At, when we did COVID and it was predominantly Emily and, and myself and then a guest or whatever, however we did that, what we're really trying to do now is say Emily's going to take that. And we've done one with Michaela, right? And one with Tyler.
So we did one with Michaela at the, the, kind of the middle to end of last year. And then this year with our new plan and our new props, we have done one with Tyler and then myself and you.
Right. So what I'm really, and Jeff, I don't want to jump in here, but since you and I have talked about it a lot, I think this role has a lot of value, especially for department heads and electives to give updates to the public on what they do, what do you do? How does your office function? When we talk about spending and budgets over those types of things, we give updates on the website. I know the sheriff, you've got a lot of, of now very nice metrics on the website. I really, that is gave me a thought on how to post our budget the same way. So I like that. But I think even having a, a face and talking about it in that way is a good thing for our public to, to see you. They don't need to see, see us all the time. They need to see you and talking through things.
We have, not to interrupt you, but Emily and I have talked. We have some things scheduled. When she asked me to come in, ideas.
No, that's all I had. I just, I mean No, it's good. I, I think that's great. That's, we want to see that from all the electives. We'd like to see that from the department heads. You know, we've got, we've got some big projects going on, the VA and such, and lots of, I think, real positive things to talk about and challenges. It's important to talk about those as well. lots of, I think, real positive things to talk about and challenges. It's important to talk about those as well. And, and let our public know what those are. So, so I'm excited to see where it goes, Emily.
Yes, me too.
Anything for the board? Any further questions for us?
No, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Very good. Jeff, Emily, thank you. Jake, we probably have a couple items to clean up. Uh, do we want to talk about your stuff? Do we want to talk about HR?
Sure.
Do that now?
Absolutely.
Cause we don't have anybody else coming in right now. Not till one?
One thirty.
One thirty today.
One thirty.
What time is he coming in? I thought he signed up for the one thirty, let me.
Yeah, one thirty to two thirty.
Two thirty.
Sheriff's one thirty to thirty, two thirty.
All right. So Jake, what do you want to do first?
Uh, you, you tell me. You want to talk about my particular individual, but I realize on the way over there is a guy signed up for a slot.
No, you just kind of assumed.
I just kind of assumed it would be a.
Trying to sneak in under the radar and.
Right.
Mine's so exciting. If you want to talk about my department, that's fine. I'll answer any question.
Let's do that. Let's talk about.
Yeah.
I don't have a, I'm sick of them. So I'll just start out with, I don't have a PowerPoint. I don't generate revenue.
I don't have a PowerPoint, don't you?
Just to be clear. Quite boring.
Wow.
Ask for five percent for my staff, which, you know, I have two full-time and a part-time. Deputy is eighty-five percent.
Okay.
I'd like to maintain that for sure. And I think the total, uh, are kind of cyclical in our expenditures. I think the total budget asks, or the total increase was less than two percent from the department. Of which rotates, um, interestingly enough, through this next budget year, we're actually only budgeting for the general election and we take off the primary and the city school. So there's always some, uh, numbers in there for special elections, which for two years didn't happen and now we've had three going on for the past two years. I don't know. Again, that's not detailed and that's broad. I don't mean to make light of any of it, but that's, that's where I'm at. We, we basically just, um, uh, have to grind through the elections. Um, that is getting a little bit more expensive.
That's what I was gonna ask you on that.
Programming and stuff isn't as bad. Um, the increase in absentee, um, trades more ballots, more envelopes, that types of thing. We have a fourteen, fourteen week lead time right now on getting absentee ballots. So we have five thousand in stock and I've actually, we've actually just placed an order to make sure we have enough for the fall. We don't think we're gonna have a lot for the primary, but, um, things like that, we're trying to think ahead. I also purchased a poll book system that's gone on a three-year program, um, trying to incorporate that into my existing budget without an additional ask. So it's twenty-five thousand a year. For three years for the last year poll book.
Okay.
We got away from the precinct apples. We, we got out of that twenty-eighty a while back. And that's the tablets that we've used for the last couple of elections, so.
Jake, as long as you've been auditor, how much have you seen the increase in what the election process costs? The counties now, do you have any idea? Is it significant? Is it double? Is it?
The, the, from when I first came into office.
Just as it grows, you know.
So the, the number of poll workers has been about the same.
Okay.
Uh, their pay unfortunately has been about the same. Programming went from when I first took office, we did in-house programming to going, having to go out, outsource programs. So that, quantify that number. It costs anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars to have an election program. Maybe not quite that much for small.
And you're four this year?
And printed.
And you have four elections this year?
This year, twenty-two, we're working on a special, we see a first human resource board right now, but, um, we started off with a bang in twenty-twenty with the Knoxville special, then rolled into the primary and then the general. And we had a, had a special, and we had a special. Or else to alter else maybe. So, um, the specials we build for, so the county pays one hundred percent for primary and general. So city school we build. It's a really complex way and there's no unified way across the state that we build, but we do build all entities for the city school. And we build the entities for specials. Um, we cannot charge for our time, you know, the extra time. We can only charge for fixed things like the programming, the ballot printing. Publication costs, uh, those types of things. So we don't get everything back, but we at least get what we purchased back for that. So.
So you can't charge, that's where the revenue piece comes, you, you can't have, you can't go above or beyond.
They're like, you know, thirty thousand for the city school or whatever that's been coming in. Um, but it's not a big thing. It doesn't run our department, it doesn't match us at all. We simply don't have the mechanism to bill for our time or our. So, um, uh, so other, so we, so in my twenty years or whatever, I've gone from in-house programming, which took our time and I made this agreement with, it was called micro vote back then. Um, technology changes and all that, we know. It's gets programmed from a company called Atkins. Um, so we pay for that. Um, we pay for the printing of the ballots. So that's increased by in-house costs to, to those outsourcing costs. I think the biggest change has been absentee voting. It just, it's just, it's continued growth. Because, um, rounding on numbers now, but you know, the envelopes themselves are between a dollar and two, between the three, postage is a dollar thirty-two. Printing of the ballot, the, the, the time of, um, the multiple times we handle it. So, you know, each absentee ballot, I think is around four dollars or something like that.
Wow.
Take that times ten thousand.
So, yeah, significant.
You know, not all that reflects, it, um, it comes from postage, the, the, and that gets spread out over time because we have to have stuff on some.
Well, I appreciate that explanation.
Is there all the? Um, questions on, I still have in there, um, some capacity if we can have additional staff, so we can continue to hold off on that. Um, that that capacity is there and it's, it's a budget. So if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used. We're still two full-time and Jody is part-time at election time. She's basically effective at full-time.
Sure, sure. Seems to be working out okay.
Yeah, we get by. Um, we're, uh, somebody said there, Nate, um, I think Michaela has done a fantastic job on cross-training. Uh, one of the things we talk about in our office is a lot is how we're such silos. Like we literally kind of do our own thing.
Right.
And, um, we talk about cross-training a lot. Um, Danny's been, um, getting a lot more exposure from what my, my desk is a lot over the last year, two years. But it's difficult when there's only us, not, this isn't to complain. But we're very siloed in our, in our office and strictly real estate. And then she's just the phone rings and there's a lot of stuff that she does within, in the mapping. I do more of the bigger picture projects and, um, the stuff to deal with the board supervisors agendas and those types of things. Trying to keep track of all the weaknesses and resolutions and all that stuff. Uh, Danny does a crossover on that, but, um, and a lot of the bigger pictures, the annual evaluation project is to, every year, family farm, ag, um, those types of once a year things that just kind of continually cycle through. So Danny does, you know, sticks with the, the claims and payroll and can do claims, but it's like, they just keep coming. They never stop. Every two weeks, boom, 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 or every three for, depending on if there's a, unclaimed. So we're very siloish. It's, we're like, we're a sickness away from kind of being in a, kind of being in a hurt. Now, we all know what each other does and we have vendor support and all that stuff, but I think this is a lot of words to the question of, are we getting along? Yes. But we, we realize that we're silos in our office. And that's on me to not do as much cross-training as we, as we could. It just, we talk about it and then it's like, but where'd that weed go?
Right. And the days that you send us stuff on Saturday and Sunday, right?
It happens.
Cause you're working.
It happens. Everybody that, I'm not, I'm not.
I know, but I mean, you, we do receive some, you know, information and I, and I, you know, you and I have had this conversation before and it is, it's your department, yeah.
We've talked about.
I think all of us probably have, yeah.
So, that's where we are.
I will say we kind of depend upon your, your, your department, so I'm.
I appreciate that. I do. Yeah. I, we take that serious and, you know.
We wouldn't want anything to happen, yeah.
We have a really good team up there and there's.
It's anybody's department, but, yeah.
There's good communication amongst the departments. It makes a big difference. It really does.
We're all in this battle together, Jake.
It is, it is team. There's no doubt. You have any specific questions? You want to know? Um, we did add, add some technology with this new, um, e-poll books. We, um, purchased some hotspots. So there's one-time fee for hotspots. We are communicating not with the election equipment. The election equipment is not attached to the internet at all. It is standalone, separate. With the e-poll books, the registers that we sign in, we communicate with them directly so we can see live feeds. Uh, we can, um, sign in and then see what, run, run what they're doing with the voter to see if we can help them if they're having a situation where they don't have ID or whatever, and we can send them messages. We can see real time how many people they're voting so we can, um, manage our ballot inventory, those types of things. So we did, did make an initial purchase of those, um, hotspots and, uh, it's a monthly fee except we have the ability to turn them off. So now we just, they're, it's a new thing for us. So we are actually just turning them off, um, if not needed. So we have to leave a couple on for the special and then we can turn them off and turn them back on and not pay that monthly fee. And then we'd have them if we had an emergency. We would have them available if other departments were, you know, if we'd have an emergency, we, we'd have those as well. So. That's, that's a new, that's a new higher technology expense that I haven't had enough on.
Very good.
Yeah. Any other specific questions?
No, no, pretty straightforward Jake. Any questions additionally for Jake? Steve?
No, I.
Thank you, Jake.
I, I have leaned heavily on Jake the last twenty years.
As I say, he used to come in with your folders and your right away.
Oh, here it comes, right?
Steve was very precise on the stuff that he needed and, and he, very detailed.
Very good. All right. All right, Jake, thank you.
Is there any other, uh, departments that you guys?
Yeah, is there anything else or you want to talk about?
Any of the other ones. When I say other departments, I don't mean like, I don't mean like treasure.
What about ninety-nine? Well, yeah, you, you want to take some money out of Michaela's budget?
No.
Michaela, is that okay?
I stay in my own lane.
All right. What about ninety-nine?
Yeah, we could sure look at that.
Let's talk about ninety-nine.
So.
Not Agent Ninety-nine, but Department Ninety-nine. I just dated myself.
Michaela voted no.
Our, the theory with ninety-nine is, um, it basically doesn't change unless you guys instruct us to. Um, we talked about it just a little bit last year and you guys made a, a change to that, uh, big line item for the.
Hundred thousand, uh, yeah. Two hundred to a hundred, I think.
Just a, a budget in line amount. Um, I don't know if you want to go through individually or if you had specific things you wanted to ask about. What I'd do, um, is if I, if there's a known project, like the VA project or something like that, I'll, I'll pop that in. But otherwise there's no other, like known big projects in Department Ninety-nine that's accounted for. Ninety-nine has insurance like property, um, property insurance, the work comp insurance, things like that. Um, based off of what is given as projections. The, uh, property, the property line I increased a little bit. I don't know if it's going to be enough comparing from other counties and, um, that, uh, just due to all the loss, the duration, all the losses and insurance issues around the country. That type of insurance is increasing. I think ICAP is probably going to have an increase in that as well. Again, it's a guess. But, um, if you, in this budget, like HERDA sent a letter, I think it's in the interview. So they have, you have your annual monthly allotment to HERDA and then there's that, I added that vehicle grant. It's in the budget. That doesn't mean that you have to do it. That part's in there. If you want to take it out, we can take it out. It's, it's a budgeted number. Um, what else? Uh, the meals, the, the, to support the, um, senior meals is in at the, what, for the day, it's just whatever is the difference between her revenues and expenses projected. So the eighty-eight thousand, three fifty-nine, the difference, that's what's in, that's what's in Department Ninety-nine, that's the first page. Kind of bouncing around, I guess I should ask if you.
That's okay. Do you guys have questions to Jake on anything specific?
What's that?
I was gonna say, do they have questions for you on anything related to this specific?
I'd ask Steve something. Steve on the HERDA, how do you feel about that? We've kind of, you know, we've in the past have talked about HERDA, but you're on that board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So this match that they're asking, you know, they're asking for the thirty-six thousand, then a local match. I'm assuming Jake, if I'm reading that right, that's on top.
That's where I read the.
Yeah, yeah. Thirteen, nine.
It's a monthly allotment to HERDA that we're part of and then that would be an additional ask. And they've asked that over the years. It's been paid and not, um, again, this, this question oftentimes.
Was it good last year, Steve, where we rejected?
I, I would ask that we support that.
Or did we support it last year?
Yes, I believe we did, didn't we?
I don't think we, it's not in the.
I don't believe so.
It wa, uh, it was supported in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
We asked, we asked for the thirty-six, um, or, yeah. We asked that, we supported that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't believe there ended up being a vehicle allotment last year.
No.
So Steve, Steve, are you saying we should support this issue this year?
I, I believe that, that it would be advantageous to Marion County.
Okay.
Could, could we think of maybe if that was such a thing, maybe every, like, we do vehicles every three years type of thing, whether you're gonna, I'm just putting that out there.
Well, it'd be beneficial because if they get that matching grant, then, then they get a lot more money from the feds. To redo their, you know, to upgrade your fleet. And, you know, it's just, uh, but to tell you the truth, we're required to have a, a transportation system, so.
So that thirteen, nine, twenty-six is in here, Jake?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a local, and it's a general purpose allotment. And then it is in your overall picture that we talked about.
Right. So no reason to take it out.
Again, it's a budget line. If you get, I'm, I'm assuming there would be something come to you and then something for the purchase or, but it's in the budget.
Yeah.
That you can say yes or no to at that point.
Yeah.
If it doesn't get used, it just is unused budget.
So we've got, we've got it allocated, okay.
To, to be quite honest, if, uh, if, if, if the COVID influx money hadn't have come probably in the HERDA, we'd probably been looking for a new system.
Uh, not to interrupt your meeting or your process, but I was gonna ask you, are they in a better position now than?
Yes.
They were?
Very much so.
And, and I ask that for emergency planning purposes because there was a point in time where they've always been involved or been mentioned in our plans, but there was a point in time where we weren't sure whether they were going to be viable.
Yeah, they're a little, they're a lot better situated now.
But that's due to COVID money, right, Steve?
That's true, but.
So how long will that last? How long will that viability last?
Well, that's what, that's, that was a, that was a kick in the arm, but I, but right now they're restructuring, so we are, we are starting to self-sustain.
Okay, okay.
As of today.
On the sheets, if you want, maybe we'll just put, like, run the figure down on page one. We, the things we just talked about, that, uh, the page one there has the, uh.
So, yeah, I was gonna talk to you about impact. Jake, did they by chance then, are they on, did they ask for, to be on this next meeting?
I, I was tagged in on those, that chain of emails, but I haven't.
Okay, so I'll just.
Projected list.
Okay.
But there's a lengthy agenda for Tuesday, it looks like.
Well, I'll just update the board a little bit. So, um, Impact had reached out and I said, I asked them what they were reaching out for because we're no longer, they provide services to Marion County but are no longer housed in Marion County, so there really shouldn't be. And we've given them an in-kind in the past. Brandon said, uh, we are planning to request the county to provide funds for our homelessness prevention program, which we can use as a match to garner additional funding for that program from the central house, Iowa Housing Trust Fund. So I'm not sure if they're expecting this five thousand that we have there or, yeah.
Tim, you heard anything about that? I'll get the mic, Jeff.
Somebody has to get it up. Sorry.
Need the boom mic. We'll hire somebody to walk around the boom mic.
I don't think there's anything specific to that, but, but I, I know that there's a lot of COVID money that, or housing still out there floating around. I don't think there's anything specific to that, but, but I, I know that there's a lot of COVID money that, or housing still out there floating around. And our bigger issue in Marion County is we don't have any actual houses to put anybody in.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I've not had a lot of help with this, but my initial reaction is I.
I have, I, I question that, I mean, I, yeah, I have some hesitation.
We've got other homeless coalitions going and, um,
And we, we just had our Impact meeting and we have not talked about that, so that's, that, that's what I was just like, I wanted to make sure and bring it up to the board and discuss before.
Yeah, there's another entity in the county that, that is working on, on a more permanent solution for, for homeless, you know, for like, short-term problems. But, yeah.
Okay, well, so, I mean, it's five thousand, we can leave it in the line.
We don't.
If you hear something that, that resonates with you, that makes sense, we can, we can allocate it, if not, we can just hold it in that line.
Historically, most generally, except for one-offs, we don't give, and county has not paid Impact directly, it's been in-kind offices.
Yep.
So then, um, just.
Jacob, could I real quick?
Yes, sir.
Back to the Impact thing. So, the board before, prior to you folks passed a resolution that said Impact would be the administrator whenever we activate the Iowa Individual Assistance Program. It's, it's Iowa's disaster program. Impact has managed that for us. But with them not providing services here, I'm not sure that that is.
Well, they provide services, they're just not housed here, does that make sense?
Yeah, correction, with them not being housed here, I'm not sure how that would be effective, or how effective that's going to be, because the people who qualify for that program are the least likely to have transportation.
Yeah, the ALCS has to run them down.
Yeah.
Now, they are seeing the trend going down, there, there was conversation, we may need to get back in these counties. So, we'll see. They're talking about different options, but not necessarily in a, us housing them.
A physical placement?
Yeah.
Well, but for this program though, you're telling, you're saying they're not in a position to administer that program?
I have serious concerns about their ability to manage it effectively. Director Kim and I have had conversations about the possibility of having their caseworkers manage it. It's to qualify for that program, it's a five thousand dollar reimbursement, they have to be at or below two hundred percent of the po, uh, national poverty level, so it'd take a big disaster to have five hundred people, to have five hundred applicants for that program. So the conversations that Kim and I have had, it probably could fit. And I, I know we're totally off, we're, we're, we're here to talk about budget, but as this stuff comes up, I need you guys to be thinking about that. The Impact currently is the provider, when, if we were to activate that program tomorrow, it would be.
We need to have a resolution brought up.
And I'm not sure that that's in the best interests of everybody concerned.
Good point.
Last, last time.
No, I was gonna say, if, if there is a, um, if there are options, Jeff, I guess what I would, I would say is this. We need to have something that says, this is our plan, this is how we would administer the program and would do it in a better way than it is currently set up. So that we could act on something.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Kim, Kim and I will continue to have conversations and likely will come to you with a resolution to change that.
Okay.
In, in the future.
And then what I'd want is some color, I mean, resolutions don't tell you anything, you need to say, we hereby resolve to do X. What everyone knows, what you're going to do that's different in, in terms of how it's currently established.
Of the process.
Right, exactly.
Okay, fair enough.
It gets really confusing with these duplication of services.
Well, we've talked about this for years, Steve, that is there, is there a way?
Why can't we just get together?
I mean, for what we do with a lot of these services with emergency management, public health, there seems to be some natural fit in those departments. But at the same time, well, the same thing I'm asking about process, and Kim, you know this from the things we've talked about, Jeff, you too. Dollars are usually attached to this. Grant dollars, those types of things, how do we get those to us instead of to these other organizations? Because we would need some fuel, so it's not just coming out of the tax base.
It would be really nice to be able to control those, have a little more control of those.
Exactly, that's exactly, yeah. So, if you can come up with a plan, we've kind of asked for this for several years, if this is the start of that, great. Maybe we do a program by program, I don't care, but if there's a way to centralize that so we have a little more visibility and control on the dollar side, that, that would be perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, no, Jeff, that's great.
That was interesting.
That's great, but for now, for now, we'll leave this five thousand in that line.
It, it won't, it won't go anywhere unless you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we'll leave that in, if you should, as you hear about Impact.
That's part of that unused, so, bottom of the page, on the bottom of page one is that line item that's been in there for some years, about property cleanup, and again, it's, if you don't use it, it's.
Right.
So this, yeah, so I want to just touch on this for a minute, because Missy brings this up a lot.
Yep.
And we've not really utilized it.
This was kind of, not in this case here, but it's kind of like the fallback for
Yeah.
when the county becomes the, the last.
So we leave it, we leave it as an emergency in, in case other remedies don't work.
That's correct.
Right.
The last time it was used was, actually used, um.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
It's a couple of years ago.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, yeah.
It feels like it was.
Right.
I, I can't remember where the property was, the county.
So, is Missy on?
Yes, I'm here, it was used for Fred Park's cleanup.
That's right.
That's right. Missy, if we leave, if we leave a hundred thousand in there, does that sound? I mean, when you go through your process, I know you worked with Ed, you worked with, with the sheriff, when we go through these steps.
Yeah, worked with Bridget Environmental Health.
Yeah.
I mean, we try every result, every option, um, to get cleanups taken care of without having to come back to the county because it's a long process and it's gonna be a long time before, if ever, you know, that the county recoups that money. So, we try every other option before we get to that point of using it, but what Ed told us when that money was put in is, we need, if we don't have any money to back it, if we hit that last resort, then there's no point in taking it to that, to the last resort. So, that's why money was put in there.
So, so, and I think that's, I think that's right, the question is, how much do we need to keep in there? We took it down from two hundred to one hundred, because we weren't using that much.
I, I think that's a fair amount, because, I mean, we would hope that we would not have to do more than, um, if it got to that point to do more than one a year, I mean, like, so we certainly hope that we can get them done without getting to that, um. I think the Parks property, that was environmental health that, um, took that, but I think it was around thirty thousand was the, what the cleanup cost was. So, even if you were looking at a major cleanup, I would hope that it could be done for a hundred thousand.
The, the footprint of the Parks County was probably a bigger footprint than what the normal cleanup would be.
We have one right now that we're trying to work toward and hoping to come to a, I guess, a private resolution and it, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be as big as, as the Parks property, but there's a, there are a couple buildings, so, um, but that takes time, it takes a lot of notification, um, and that one that moves forward through our process. Yeah, I mean, you know, let's face it, it takes up to a year or two to get to that point, once we finally say, okay, they're not cleaning up and the county has to do it, so.
I, I think a hundred thousand.
And Bridget speaks a lot about it than, um, than I do, but we are gonna look at some options and updating some ordinances, as we talked the other day, that hopefully can speed that process up or make it more well-defined than what we have right now.
Alright, that sounds good, Missy, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Steve, you think that's enough?
Yeah, I think a hundred thousand dollars is probably a fairly reasonable amount.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll just hold that in there then, in that line.
Again, if it's not directed, it's not used.
Yeah.
And, or you have the budget room to do something.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on, I'm on page six, I got, I do have a question, I don't know if you guys see something else, but it just made me think of it. Looking at our electrical light and, you know, um, our gas, our, our electrical bill for the courthouse, I see that we've already used seventy percent of that. I mean, is that something because of those increases? Um, so, item six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven down, that thirty-eight thousand. What's your thoughts there?
Um, honestly, I don't, I don't know, off the top of my head.
Okay.
It's, that's a.
I think we've put sticky notes on the light switches, turn off the lights.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, we need to consider increasing that, cause it, I know what we, we're paying at home.
We can look into that and see.
My line bill was three times higher than it's ever been this month.
Twenty-nine to twenty-five to thirty-eight, uh, let's just put fifty thousand in it, Jake.
Okay.
That way we'll cover any operation, if it goes higher than that, then we'll start, uh, unplugging things. Jake gets to work in the dark.
Rolling brown out.
That's right. That's what happened in England during the seventies, three days a week in line, they didn't have electricity.
And then I had a couple of questions, and they're, they're small amounts on page seven. We, and I don't know what these are, the fixed plant equipment courthouse, I didn't know if those were under Chris's or if this is something additional, we have ten to twenty.
If it's in Department Ninety-Nine, um, it would, it would probably be directed by the facilities department, paid for out of Department Ninety-Nine.
Okay.
I'm looking across the different ways, I see some pretty, uh, like a hundred fifty-seven, one there and seventy, so that was probably, again, I don't off the top of my head without accessing it, but fixed plant equipment generally is a bigger project, like a heating and cooling.
Most of that's been taken care of.
Or something like, something like that, um, so again, it's a budget line, ten thousand dollars.
Just extra that.
Do you much good?
No, it's, it's, it's smaller amount, yeah, yeah.
But I don't, I don't have a specific.
So, Kim, you can't have any major repairs?
I think there's probably some for her building teams.
Public health stuff.
Yeah. Um, so the environmental, yeah, let's see.
So we leave, we leave, we leave twenty thousand in courthouse maintenance, that's the bottom of that page, Kishet, that you were looking at, bottom of page seven. I wish Chris was here.
Yeah, and again, sometimes.
I'm not sure why, why do we leave that in Ninety-Nine and not just put that in his budget?
That's where I was, I was questioning if it was duplication, maybe by chance, just not caught.
There has to be better room to do stuff at some point, so over time, over time, different works, different directors. Sometimes, people, if it's for the courthouse and, it's just how, how you want to view it, we've talked about this, Mark, Mark, over the years, we've talked about, you want it to be strictly to each department, you want it to be a general services type of expense or what. So if the board would want to consider everything, like lights, power, repairs, to be a facilities type thing, then everything could be moved to Department Fifty-One. If it, if, if it's more, like, you want to be able to see what the department costs from a personnel and that type of thing, and not a big fixed plant project or something like that, replacing the condenser.
Right.
And sort of, so, it's all general fund.
The shared, yeah, the shared services concept is what we and I have talked about these years.
And that's the direction that we've gone over the.
And I think that's fine, I think the main thing is just making sure, I, and, I'll, it probably isn't, but we got twenty thousand there, it's probably not in Chris's.
Not specifically.
Yeah, so, that's fine, just leave it, just leave it as.
So, Kishet, I always kind of, not very territorial from that, from that standpoint, so it's like, first thing I look at is the number on the way left, which is the fund, what fund is it? Right?
Yeah, it's general fund, yeah.
It's general fund, so that's like the same bucket, I agree with that, and then it's, um, who's basically responsible for it? And that, the facilities, a lot of this is this general area, like, we don't, Department Ninety-Nine probably has this building.
Right.
It's that type of thing. We could break out all the insurances in individual department as well, it's more of a, what fund is it coming from, and is there actual budget room, is what I kind of look at, because if there isn't, it's gonna require an.
No, and I agree, cause I looked at the imbalance on twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one in July, you know, we had roughly, you know, we had a significant fund balance, which is good, which we.
So, so here's what I meant, uh, here's something to look at, Jake, so take that twenty. Take on page ten, where we've got other capital projects, buildings, okay, that's fifty. And then we've got our capital improvements fund, which is on page eleven, at two sixty-six.
Is that total though, let's see, two sixty-six probably has the.
Yeah, so I, I'll, so Mark, I think we're here, so that, those, the two ones that you talked about first, the twenty and the fifty,
Yep.
they're not really assigned to anything, it's like budget room for the board to take care of, of, of something at the courthouse, or just in general, that you're not planning on, like, multiple projects in the last few years haven't been like budgeted a year and a half before, right?
It's gonna be spazier, it's maybe just whatever line.
It is or isn't, Steve, depending.
Yeah, it is or is.
Well, I think the main thing, I, the only reason, I'm, I'm not asking for a change.
No, no, I get it.
I'm just saying, we need to keep the dollars in mind.
Yes, sir.
For when we get to this segmented fund, this two sixty-six seven.
Yeah.
Which is our separate fund.
Yes, sir.
For major capital projects, but yet we've got, at least in those two lines, we've got seventy thousand dollars allocated for capital improvements.
Right.
Capital work, building work.
Yeah.
So, just make sure everybody understands they're in these different buckets, I'm not saying we have to change it.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Right.
And so like, when you, when a project comes up now, that, you know, the budget was set a year ago or whatever, you have this flexibility. And then what we'll oftentimes do, Mark, is, um, when the actual bill invoice comes in for a specific project, we may build something that fits the, this chart of account parameter, that, that show as a, as a, as a project, so you can see it.
Yeah.
An additional project number on it.
Yeah, cause the way I would look at it, and this is just because I, I tend to roll everything up anyway.
Yeah.
I would say you've got an additional seventy, two sixty-six.
Additional what?
You've got an additional seventy thousand on top of your two sixty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you could for a project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, there, there is, there is room there to be, if we, if we have a major expense, now a lot of it we're taking care of for our, the, the big dollar.
Yeah, which, which we're gonna have to budget for.
Yeah, yeah, so, that, just highlight that and remember those dollars are there.
So let's talk about that two sixty-six for a minute, why that's a specific number there, that was, when I just put in these numbers, that's what the fund balance was in that fund, that is the fund that was, that's the remaining balance.
From the, from the sale of the.
From the sale of the.
County home.
Sale of the county home, so that's what's left, right? So, from a budgeting standpoint, at least what I think, at least my philosophy is, is like, you budget for everything you have, because you can't spend it if you don't have the budget, if you don't use it, you don't use it.
Right.
So that's why that specific number's there. Just as we're saying that, I, I do kind of, it kind of hit me is, in this current year budget, what you guys did a year ago now, when we were talking about Department Ninety-Nine, we actually started a lot, there's a line item, we just haven't, it hasn't been transferred yet, that would take direction, um, in a, well, we'd have to talk about it, when you want to do it, it doesn't mean it's not gonna happen this year, but there's like a hundred seventeen thousand, I think it was, expense budgeted in the current year to transfer from the general fund to this capital projects fund.
Right.
So in essence, the capital projects fund balance, if you intend to make that transfer to add to that capital projects fund, would be the two sixty-six plus the one seventeen, and I'm just thinking of that as I'm sitting here.
Yeah.
Because I only put in the actual cash balance. So in theory, if you would transfer that and then decide to do a project yet this year, it's a part of budgeting.
Is that on page ten there?
To transfer?
Yeah.
It would be coming out of the fund one, so we probably have to go back.
General basic operating transfer, page ten, click at the bottom. This is one, we have it for fifty thousand, was one sixty-seven?
So I, are you asking me?
If that's what we're talking about there.
That one seventeen, Jake, is not in this book yet, right?
It is in.
Or is it someplace else?
It is actually, oh, I apologize. It's actually one sixty-seven.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah, that's, yeah, no, you're good.
It was one seventeen and then, so it, this exact.
So is, is that.
This isn't con, yes, it's that line. So that was new, that, and you guys added to the budget last year, which is the current year budget this year, that's the middle column, page ten, bottom line. So there is budgeted room for you guys to move, and the fund balances reflected potentially happening, one sixty-seven from the general fund
Right.
to the sub, to that capital projects fund in this fiscal.
Right, right, so we've got, we've got two sixty-six plus one sixty-seven, so Steve, I guess the reason I'm kind of highlighting all these numbers, since we decided not to do thirty-fourteen and go with junction ninety-two, but you've said we still need storage. There's cash to think about that.
And we still have the sale of. Yep, and we still have the sale of the lot, and if we do it.
So we've got, so start, I guess I would say we can put a plan together if we need some additional storage. That you were talking about, there is cash available.
Right, we, we were tapping some of the ARPA money for that.
Right, but we decided to give that to Tyler.
Well, I don't know that we decided to give him, I thought we was only doing like a million now at twelve.
Was a hundred ninety-eight thousand or something was left, yeah.
Based on what he presented yesterday.
Well, I know, I know, I know, the whole thing's, the whole thing's.
It doesn't, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. I mean, ye, this either sits as a reserve. For those projects, or we use it and give Tyler as much leeway as we can get. I'm just saying, as you think about the plan for that. There's, there's, there's dollars.
I, 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 I get where you're coming from.
I don't actually, I don't actually care where we take it from.
Right, I get where you're coming from, and I, and I understand Tyler's numbers kinda change how we look at things.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in, so that two six, that one sixty-seven is what was the finalized budget last year, and I believe it started at a fifty. And like, we need to start this program, we need to basically start our capital project savings and actually budget for it. And then during the discussions on department, and I think that's where the one seventeen got added in, to get to the one sixty-seven. So it's budgeted, hasn't been moved yet this year. You guys, um, we just haven't ever done that mechanism, doesn't mean it can't or won't, we would just, it has to be done before June.
Right.
Right, so then, uh, one, one spot to the left, it says fifty, so that, that continued what you guys had asked for last year. So that amount that could be transferred from the general fund to the capital projects fund, in this budget is fifty. Um, and that is reflective of all your ending cash balances and stuff like that.
Why don't we get, why don't we get something put together Jake to move the one sixty-seven to this?
Yep.
And I can tell you why this, why this storage issue is an, is a, is an issue for me, because. I think if we can become more self-supported, especially what we're seeing, and, and when you try to contract something, you know, it's just outrageous.
Well, we're selling that lot, so we're, we're, we're gonna lose some of that. So I guess I would say, just, we, we've got cash, whether it's ARPA, and we redistribute ARPA, or we do something different.
I understand the fund, Mark, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to point out that I think it's very, would behoove us to look at being.
Well, that's why I'm.
Self-supported.
And I, I guess I'm saying, and you're behooving, um, we got, we got the money.
I know, I'm just stating why I think I'm, why I'm thinking.
All right.
So also, um, if you're on page ten, if you go to page eleven, where we just were, and look down, you're gonna see. Um, that's why our expense reserves are much higher, um, six million four fifty-nine, so those are high. Okay, so, that's the new, had to build a new fund for the ARPA money.
Yep.
We don't have that much money yet. But you have to budget for it to spend it, so that's.
Government prints it too, they, they don't have that much money either.
That's why it's the number of the lot is.
Maybe we should build our own net.
You know Jake, the way the government accounts, you could just put a number there.
Shake the tree.
We, it's just way easier to get it in an initial budget than doing amendments.
Yes, understood, but that's, that's pretty accurate.
It helps, on your part, yep.
Yeah.
Less work.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's why that number's there.
All right.
Um. We do department ninety-nine for some of our more central services, like with the telephone and things like that now, is, is in here.
Yep.
Be fun one, and then four nine thousand series. Um, and then there highlights your question.
Nope, nope, that was, that.
Those were the main ones, I just wanted to make sure that we, as we think about those segmented funds.
Yep.
We, we know we're going to have storage and space needs, we've got the cash.
Yeah, but, and I, I don't remember if Tyler had tapped that capital projects fund or not in his thing, I, I can't remember.
Yeah.
It takes a while to get to anything material for a capital project.
So, so like I talked about yesterday Jake, this is more process question, what would it take to create a segmented? Uh, road reserve fund, would that be out of his department, would that be?
Um, so you mean, uh, funds that can be used on a rural project or something like?
Funds that he could use in a general way to support road operations. In any way he would deem necessary, given the numbers he showed yesterday.
Yeah, so, I think his fund, the secondary road fund is restrictive to in right of way. And I don't want to speak for Tyler here, but in right of way use only, um. Has very limitations to it, the general fund is, is, could be used for basically anything.
Okay.
So how to do that, if you wanna set up a special kind of, to be used road fund for projects that. Probably not for his employee costs or something, would be. Again, just, this is just coming off the top of it, you would have to effectively do it like you're doing it here to the capital projects fund.
Yep.
Is, or to do a set aside, you'd have three dollars and fifty cents for your general fund, general fund monies can be used for whatever you want.
Right.
As long as it's accounting purpose.
So I would.
So you would have to peel off.
Yeah.
Up to a million dollars or whatever it is you wanna do.
Right. Could we, could we put, uh, uh, lost money into that fund as well?
Um, I don't know that it could go into that fund, Mark, you would just not use it in the lost.
Just re, just reallocate it within, within, within the lost fund?
Yeah, yeah, that capital projects fifty percent, that fund twenty-nine.
So we just have to remember you got it in two spots.
That fund has actually funded several other projects, it funded, uh.
He's pretty good about going in and, and checking with you and claiming it.
Nobody else asked.
It is, it is previously funded, that project.
How many I need to pull, how many I need to pay me?
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm thinking about something that's much more general than that.
Yep.
Given the numbers he presented yesterday, that we start building up some type of road reserve.
Yep.
Yes.
Because we're gonna need to, that's pretty self-evident from the numbers he presented.
It's probably not very common to do that, Mark, because everybody's fighting for that general fund money.
I know.
I know.
But we need roads.
Yes. I get that.
So.
But if in the lost, it was allocated, wasn't there like eight hundred thousand, is that correct?
Um, that's what we're projecting in the next, to that, for the fifty percent.
Yep.
To go into that, that you guys had discussions of dedicating that to the, his building project.
Right, yeah, right, so depending on how we use ARPA for the building project, that could redistribute some of those funds.
It might, depending on how much he needs, and I think he was kinda needing all of the local option for a few years and ARPA money.
Well, we'll, we'll, I'm, I'm gonna keep that in the back of my head, but I, I think.
Again, none, none of it would be spent without you guys telling us.
Right, I think it's good though that, to think and dedicate, just like we did with capital improvements, when you see things that are going to be large dollar amounts. At least to start thinking in terms of setting aside some of those dollars for those express purposes, cause his projects takes, takes so much money.
Yep.
And, yeah, I'll think about it.
It's kinda like the jar at home for your trip, for a vacation.
It is, it's the envelope system.
It's, yes.
Dave Ramsey.
Yes, sir. Bought the book, didn't read it.
All right, anything else on this, on this one, that you wanna point out?
Uh, I don't know if you wanna broach topic, uh, this, the, the libraries. That's in here at full ask.
What do we have in here for libraries, where are we at?
It's, it's a hundred thousand.
Okay.
At the full ask. Uh, it's still on the, it's in, it's got some other company, thirty-three.
Well, let's talk libraries.
What is that?
Thirty-three or something like that, there we go. Okay.
I just wanted to point out that it's, okay, just like last year, it was at full ask.
Thanks Jake. Got a hundred thousand in there, statutorily, what do we have to give them, if we just went down to the bare minimum? I forgot what the, there's, there's a statutory floor.
Yep, there's eleven cents, and I have that Jake. No, you don't have the, I have the email you sent me Jake, when I was asking about how that process worked.
Oh, at least six, uh, six cents.
Six and three quarter cents.
Six and three quarter cents per thousand is the statutory minimum. Our allocation and. Uh, twenty twenty-one was eleven cents, a little over eleven cents, state average is fifteen cents, so. Uh, Mark put together a nice little summary in that middle paragraph.
Yeah, we were just a little over eleven cents.
So, if I read this right Jake, from what the levy is, it's additional to get to that hundred thousand is like forty thousand dollars. From what the levy produces. Okay?
Yeah.
The total ask is a hundred thousand, so the difference is roughly forty thousand. My question was.
From the, from the requirement to.
Yep, yep, to the requirement to the ask, was that forty thousand, does it have to be prorated? Does it have to be, cause right now, it's, could it be divided equally to how many libraries we have? Versus one library getting, you know, Pella's the largest, so they get the most of it. And I don't know that.
So you're talking, it just, it doesn't have to be distributed equally to each of the libraries, no matter what the dollar amount is.
I believe that it has to, that there has to be a six and three quarter cents levy to libraries.
Yep.
I personally, I do not, the system has been the system, uh, since I've been here, and I believe it was. The libraries had, had put it together years ago and maintained it and gone forward, legally from a requirement standpoint, I don't know. The distribution method, that, that you'd have to ask, from a budget standpoint, it can be in here, it is in here, that's all reflected, but their balances. I don't know about the legal requirement for the distribution method.
Yeah, cause you know, Pella, for instance, you know, right now, it, at the hundred thousand, what you, what we, you know, is in the budget. Total, I'll ask, they would get, you know, fifty percent of that.
Which is a base plus of percentage breakout on checkouts.
And Knoxville would get twenty-six, and then these, the other smaller libraries get, you know, anywhere from five to seven.
So I, I mean, without knowing.
Right.
That.
Right.
And knowing whether you can. Change it so that you give your more rural libraries more, cause they probably need more support.
That, that was my thought.
That's your question?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
So, but if we don't have an answer for that specific, I don't know, I hate to just throw a research project at Ed when he's. Is he on?
Some of his staff are.
Okay, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with that. I think the, if you, if that, if that, if the answer is, it's just gotta be spread. According to a per capita basis, which would be. Pella's got more people.
I bet that's the answer.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah.
Well, I kinda think that, if it's per capita, that makes sense to me, but who knows, but what do you want that rate to be? That's, I mean, the question to answer is what do you want the actual gross dollars to be? We can decide, if, if the answer comes back to us, yes, you can distribute it based on need, then we, then we can do that. But right now, it's what do you want that, that per capita amount to be? Do you wanna leave it where it is, do you wanna take it down, they're asking for more, correct?
Correct.
Last year, the county gave ninety-five.
Yep. Yeah.
And it's out of fund eleven, which is rural services, so it's only paid for out of, the, it's only, um, township, township population.
Correct.
It's basically a five thousand dollar ask.
But then they say in there, I think if they spread that five thousand dollars equally or something, that's, that's where I'm kinda like puzzled at it.
They just add it to the base.
Yeah, they add it to the base.
So everybody got equal, of the increase, everybody gets equal amount.
Right.
Right.
From last year, increased from last year, everybody gets.
So that makes me think kind of that it doesn't have to be, that additional dollars doesn't have to be, um, per capita. I think if you're able to take this extra and divide it equally, that's where I question that, that's where I come with that.
I think that's a good question.
So I would prefer not to decide on that if we can find that out from Ed or whoever it may be, so.
That's absolutely fine, if you would make that official request, and that'd be great.
Yeah.
From the budgeting standpoint, I would recommend that the budget number, just like we talked about with everything else today. You guys have it, it's, last year you didn't pay out the, the amount that was budgeted. Unless you specifically want me to lower this now, which would reflect well through the fund balance. It'd be, that's the decision like today to move forward with, you don't have to make the decision today, I guess, but.
Right, but it's budgeted in here if we just, yep.
Again, you do not have to use budget room, you, you appropriate what you wanna appropriate.
So you're gonna ask Ed that question?
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to contact Ed and find out.
Good, good, so we'll do that, and we'll just hold it a hundred thousand. Now, I'm gonna just give you my, my hint, right now. My, my. Directionally. If we can do what you're suggesting, the. We've asked our taxpayers to really step up for two major projects, one in Pella and one in Knoxville. So if we can take the dollar amount down, but yet give more dollars to our other more rural libraries, I'm all for it. And reduce the amounts we give to Pella and Knoxville. Cause we've already asked our taxpayers to step up and support those major projects. So, if there's a change in how Pella funds things, if there's a change in how Knoxville funds things, maybe we can have a discussion.
Yep.
But our, our not, our unincorporated residents are already supporting those major housing developments within those cities. And, and I think we need to have a more robust discussion with those two entities about some of these types of supports.
I agree.
So, so, so Kisha, whatever you find out, I would like to go more toward, you know, the, the smaller libraries.
Yep, yep.
If we could do that, so, so I'll look forward to seeing what you find out.
Yeah.
Very good, all right, so we'll leave it, we'll leave it as is for now Jake, until we get an answer.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
Um, not that I'm aware of, just, sorry. Um, in here is like the, um, insurances, the, the, um, the, all those I think are level. Maintaining the ways we continue to do, and I, I don't think it's a bad plan at all, but inmate excess insurance. That's like a catastrophic.
Yeah, we brought that in, what Jason about.
Several years ago.
Five, six years ago. Yeah.
Yeah, we brought it in a few years ago, and I think it's a good thing to leave it in place like Jason said.
It, it is similar to like, like, as much as I know or don't know about dental insurance and things like that, I do believe there's an end cap on it. So it's not like an endless supply of money in case we have a, a major.
Well, it's, it's a stop-loss excess liability plan, right?
Yeah, and it, it's thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's well worth the money.
I don't know if you're using, that's the only function it is, right, you're not, you're paying the hospitals.
No, knock on wood, uh, we're, yeah, yeah, we've been very good, and it, but it's a good insurance to have.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
If you guys didn't have any other specifics, nothing, those are hot, those are the bigger picture items that.
Any other questions on this? Steve?
No, I agree with all we used to discuss.
Okay, very good. Jake?
Uh, I, Carl, unless you guys have changes from departments or something like that, budget has what it needs to proceed.
All right, very good, so, um, our next is, I can't hear you. Oh, Lisa?
Who's you wanna meet with me about my budget?
I would, I would like to, can we do it after lunch?
Sure.
All right.
I would say after lunch, yeah, I would like to, at Lisa's, I'd also like to, at the end of hearing Jason's, talking overall cap. You know, discussion of salaries to overall.
For the employee base.
Employee base, yep, yep.
That's on the document.
Yep, great, thank you.
Very good, anybody else, anything else that we're missing right now Jake?
I don't know, I really wasn't tracking who we're doing.
Maybe we covered our, we covered our lost fund, we've covered our fund two, we've covered ninety-nine.
That fund, and your levies are.
Levy rates.
Levy rates are set.
Yeah, so I think, I think for the major items that we always have to check off, that we've got those nailed down. So, remaining items will be Jason, Lisa, salaries.
Carla.
Oh, Carla, sorry.
Carla.
Carla.
But we'll have time, cause.
Yeah.
Call Carla.
Right, very good, so when is, uh, when is, when is?
Um, Jason's is to start at one thirty, so I don't know if you wanna.
Where's, I guess. I need to schedule it. I packed all this, you know, it's gonna be on the stack. All right, so if we break for lunch now. Lisa, can you do this in half an hour? Can you talk in half hour?
Right now?
No, 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 at one o'clock.
One lady's asking, do you need a half hour? Sorry, I need to speak.
I was planning on one thirty, I mean. I was planning on one thirty coming back.
Well, I was thinking.
I have an appointment, I'm sorry.
So do we need to do you now?
Talk, but you don't, but what?
I'm ready to talk now.
Can we do it at the beauty shop?
I was gonna say to you that or tanning, Jason.
I'm giving up my tanning.
Wow. Wow, alright, um. Alright.
Whatever you would like, Mr. Chairman.
Let's talk now. I would, I don't want you to give up your appointment. Let's go to HR fourteen, there's nothing in it. Told you it's gonna get out of control here Friday after.
I'm speechless now, so.
What do you got, Lisa?
I don't really have anything. If you have any questions.
All that for. So, so you saying you don't need a budget?
I would like to say thank you. For my assistant position. She has, she has, um, been a true asset. Um, to the whole building, um, not only just to me, but to the whole building. Um, she's very eager to learn. Um, she comes, she came with, um. Insurance knowledge and she's very eager to learn. She's asked a lot of great questions. She's not afraid to dig in, she's not afraid to, um. Help whenever she needed, so I, I do appreciate that position. Um, it, it's getting more difficult every day to do HR just with one person for whole county, so. I do appreciate, um. The opportunity to have that position, so.
Very good.
Um, really there's no, I, I reduced my budget a little bit.
So the, so the question comes, I'll just, uh, periodically I will get a message from another chairman of another county. Mahaska, Warren, asking to share services, HR services. So. To date, I've been very reluctant to do that. For a couple of reasons. Number one, we don't have a lot of bandwidth, extra bandwidth, just to handle our own stuff. Um, and number two, liability. Taking on HR liability from another county would require, I think, a fairly complex twenty-eighty arrangement. Um, so just to let you all know, so far to date, I've kinda just. I don't know what the word is, pocket veto those. I, I'm just not open to that right now. If we had an HR department of four or five. And had capacity and our employee base was double, maybe. Cause we could probably fund a lot of our HR work through those arrangements. But, but right now I don't think that would work very well. And Lisa, and every time I talk to Lisa about it, then her. I, I, I see, I see fear starting to form in her, in her eyes, and so. I think I've pushed her as far as I can go with this HR.
You, you have, and, and right now, um, this week has just been a challenge, um, but normally on any given week. You know, I don't know what's coming my way. You know, it's hard to forecast.
Yeah.
What, what is, what does the future look like? Um, we, we are keeping busy. Um, and, and you know, we had a lot of good discussion about the insurance this year, um, earlier. I've had people reach out and ask how they can help, so I've had employees say, hey, how can I help? Um, people understand the high drug supply point, I'm willing to come out and tell my story.
Right.
Um, I've had Kim and her department step up and ask, you know, can they, can they do biometric checks and so forth, so. It, it's really nice that people come to ask, that are willing to help.
Right.
Um, that's always good.
And, and the other thing, Lisa, about that, and this is also for before as well. Even though right now I don't think we're in a position to do that, or to do kind of a shared services model. What I would encourage both of you, if you hear from other board, people that are on boards, but. And this topic comes up. If we had time to build a model around it, so we knew what the staffing requirements would be, what the financials would be. That might change where we could have a shared services model. It wouldn't be anything different than what Kim does for public health. Um, Jason handles PSAP work for other, uh, cities. Uh, we do other things like that. We've talked about it in terms of some of our other departments. But we'd have to build a, a financial model around that to know, would we make money? We don't wanna require any more out of our taxpayers to subsidize other HR areas. And we would have to close the loop on the liability piece. So if that is something.
That would be the biggest piece for me is the, the liability and being able to.
So if you, if you hear from other supervisors, just know that. We would have to be able to build those models first.
Well, that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah. We wouldn't just jump in and do it.
I'm up for a challenge, but I'm not sure I'm up for that challenge.
Cause we've had that question with the county engineer too, shared services.
Absolutely, same, same idea, same idea.
And that, and as those department heads, they have to be on board with that too, cause that is, it's a, you know.
And, but I think, I think you think about it a little bit, and you, especially the counties to our south. There is opportunity for us. Um, from that standpoint, where you take some of that administrative burden off of them, they can do more for their residents. We've got people that know this stuff. So the state's already moving in this direction. On other services, public health being one. Kayla talked about it with, with Treasurer's Office. I'm sure Jake, there's been conversations in the auditor world. At, at some point about this. So just be thinking about that. Again, if we can build models, financial models and, and liability structures that work to protect us and finance it. That's gonna require staff to do these.
Exactly, that's what I, I mean, it's not only the structure of it, it's how we're gonna physically place the, the extra staff.
Right, right. So. Not saying we're gonna do that, but.
And, and again, I'm on board with it, but I, I appreciate the discussion and the realization that. Two people is gonna be a, a huge burden to do it.
But I think it speaks well of what we're doing, Lisa.
Exactly.
That people are calling and saying, hey, we know you've got an HR area. And we don't, or we, we've never had that type of, of more professional service, we would like to talk to you. That's a good thing.
Totally, yep. Uh, if there's no questions on my budget.
Yeah, do you have any, any questions?
Anybody, any questions on my actual budget? Okay, um. Safety? We're, we're asking.
And I do wanna, I do wanna, I do wanna echo, I, I'm glad you're here. Renee, thank you. Keep me in line.
She can see you and I in line.
More, more than she bargained for.
She's doing wonderful. Very proud of her.
Okay, so you asked, yeah, I was asked, you asked for. Roughly a three percent.
For me, um, yep, so I put in a three percent for myself. Um. The line item that I take Renee out of looks a little wonky, um, but I've put in a five percent for Renee. If you remember last July, we did not. Um, she did not get a raise last July, she had started position in March. Um, I feel a five percent is, is adequate for her because. Um, of her knowledge, her willingness to help out, um. She, she's doing phenomenal. She's already doing, um, new hires, um, so when departments hire. I make that offer, um, she handles all their pre-employment, physicals. Um, gets them onboarded with the standard paperwork. And right now I've been doing the, um, insurance talks with people. She can do it. She knows, um, but we do a tag team right now and, you know, if, if. She's got something else on her plate, I'll do it. If I have something else on my plate, she's willing to step up and do that.
With, I'm gonna ask another question, um, with. Since we've had, you know, dealing with COVID, what do you guys, I see you have the safety, um, s- supply line. So do you think you guys will be able to do some things or?
So we have some, we have some, Jeff, who doesn't mind, um, twenty thousand's been our ask for. Ever. Um, some years we use it, some years we don't, all of it, um. That has something that we have challenged Renee with, is give us some new ideas. Um, Jeff and I are kind of out of ideas or. What, what do, what does an incentive look for you? Um, we would still like to have a luncheon, we've already talked about that. We would still like to do that, hopefully we put in the fiscal. We can get that in, um, and we just finished another great year on our, um, our work comp. Um, and if you remember that, um. Work comp goes back three years on what your mod rate is, and we got a, a good mod rate. I'm looking, um, for. An exceptional mod rate coming up soon because our bad year drops off.
Yeah, as I said, bad year, so what is that gonna take it down to now? Give me an estimate. Could be really close or even better than we've ever had.
Yes.
Meaning what?
Repeat that.
It, it could be. It could be better than we've ever had, and if you give me a second, I'll grab my book and tell you.
Yeah. Because we were already sub one hundred thousand. On work comp.
Yeah, we were sub one.
And when we started Safety Committee, Jeff, we were pushing what?
Well, we were.
We were pushing being kicked out of the pool.
We were averaging a lost time accident every eighteen days, if I remember the number correctly.
Yeah. So it's been a massive change.
So our, our highest mod rate was one point zero eight. And remember anything over one. Is, is not. That, that, it was one eight eight, prior year to that it was one oh three. Um, and that is about the time that, um, you named Jeff and I co-chairs. Um. Our best year so far was eighteen nineteen and we had a mod rate of point six six. And then we got an additional, um. Point eight zero, um, good, good experience bonus. Um, our premiums were seventy-eight thou, just sev, just shy seventy-nine thousand.
And that's come down from what, Lisa?
Um, our highest was two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy.
I know it's significant, yeah.
That's, that's, uh, that's excellent.
Now, I will tell you that we may co-chair this, this committee, but it's really the department heads. And the employees realizing, um, that if they work safe, this does come down. They report the accidents the proper way and go through the proper channels. Um, you can still have an accident, but it's managed a lot easier.
Right.
With this process in place.
Jake, do we, do we budget a line item for work comp insurance?
Yes, sir.
What are we budgeting right now?
No pressure, right Jake? Sorry, buddy.
I'm thinking ninety in my head, but I have to. Find it.
While he's looking, I'm gonna tell you too, that our main goal is to get back on track. Um, with safety because COVID hit, um, we are looking at luncheon and then. Um. If you remember back in the beginning, we went through the process of how our premium comes about. What, it depends on what job you do, what the risk is, what the payroll is, and just take it through that scenario. We're, we're, that's our plan. Um. Is to educate again. We got a great response from that before. Um, and we feel like there's been a lot of turnover, new employees, that it's. It, it would be a good refresher for everybody just to remember that, you know, hey, working safely, this does save us money. You know, it, it's, it's valuable, so that is our, that is our intent, intent.
Hundred and ten, excuse me, the budget holds a hundred and ten thousand.
That's all, is that all general fund?
Supplemental fund.
Supplemental?
And we're looking at. And our estimated for this year was ninety-two.
So we pay.
You pay the ninety-two and then we kinda wait, they come audit and you see what your actual was.
You pay off estimates and then make sure. They're doing audit.
But the hundred, looking back the last three years, a hundred is. Sufficient and. You know, this last year we were, our mod rate currently is point seven nine and we have a good experience bonus of eighty point eight two. So. With that bad year falling off and us having a good year. Wow.
Much lower, I mean, there's, there's gonna be, after why we can't go any lower. But how much lower do you think? Have they given you an, an idea? Another ten percent?
In one year we dropped twenty, so.
I know, but that, we were already high, I mean.
We were at eighty, eighty-six and we dropped to sixty-six.
Okay, well, we'll see what they come up with.
I'll bet some of them they charge more, you know.
Let's leave that in there for now. And since it's fund two, I don't think we'll make a change there right now.
Yeah, it doesn't get used.
I mean, it's part, we're reducing the levy rate anyway.
And use that as a fund too.
Good, nice, excellent work. And to our managers and employees for taking safety seriously.
Absolutely. Oh, our department has rocket, they talk about it all the time, um. It, it, it truly is a curve.
You're saving, when you're saving six figures on any line item, that's significant. That is, that is significant, but very good, thank you.
I'd just like to call out. As an example, we recently gave. Mike McMurray from the engine, from the road department, some concerns that we had. Um, that we, that Lisa and I had both seen. And. Happy to report that the following day. Things were different. Thing, things got addressed. So. Credit to them for hearing us out, not being defensive, addressing it and fixing it in twenty-four hours. And, and that's just one example. I'm not putting them over and above anybody else, but they're, they're a big department. Um. Great to see that kind of response, and that, and that's what we need.
That's good. And Jeff, we haven't had any more issues on the claim side like we did a few years ago? No issues on the claim side like we had a few years ago?
We have internally done some things that at some point in time, we don't have a, we don't have a rulebook to go by. Um. We recently had a, a couple employees involved in an auto accident. Actually called Lisa to the scene to get that process started, where she could have one-on-one with the employees. Um. And that seems to have helped with the billing. Getting the billing where it needs to go sooner than later, so it's not. Uh, previous to that, it was kinda getting sent to the employees. The employees are feeling the burden of, of these additional bills when they really needed, if they'd been routed properly from the get-go, they never belonged there in the first place, so. Um, w- we have just kinda tried to feel our way through this and do what's right for the employees at the time and what's right for our process and. Judging by the last couple, it, it has made a difference.
Very good. Excellent. Any questions? Very good, thank you for managing this. You guys did that phenomenal. Very good. Lisa, anything else we need to talk about?
No, I'm finished. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Alright. We'll reconvene then at, looks like now. One thirty. Is there a motion for recess?
Make motion for recess.
Second.
John.
Aye.
Coles.
Aye.
Really?
Aye. Thank you.
Alright, I believe we're recording.
Alright, very good. We are back entertaining motion to resume regular session.
Make motion, we reconvene into regular session or the special session, whatever you wanna call it.
Second.
McColes.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Very good. We are back. Um, ready to wrap up the afternoon of budget leading off. Sheriff Sandhold.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Alright. Well, maybe just start off, kinda give it like everybody else, high level, uh, major changes year over year. What you've kinda focused on within this submission and then the board, I'm sure will have questions from that.
Yep, you bet. So, uh, on this year's budget, obviously, um, for the last few years, you know that I've tried not to have increases. you know that I've tried not to have increases on different areas. My main focus and I, with about fifty employees in my office, the, the number one increase is employees. So that's, so once again, you'll see through here, um, other than maybe some minor things of moving some dollars around to different areas, um, it's, it's expenses of employees. Those are where the changes or increases are. And, um, it's what kind of our focus has been. I got a great office, great employees. Things are going really well out there and that's where you will see those increases.
Any other items you want to note, Jason, just in terms of equipment or?
We're, overall, we're doing well. Um, Troy, my chief deputy, sitting in the back of the room, does a really good job with the vehicle side of things. Those are one of those areas, fuel costs. I mean, we always kind of up and down and that's a hard thing. I am, um, pretty excited in regards to you guys using some of the ARPO money, um, with the Highway ninety-two project. We talked about fuel tanks. Tyler and I have, uh, worked with that quite a bit. I think once again, that will be a savings. Um, we have contracted, I mean, through Farm Service on different things for fuel, which has showed us decreases in, in the past. But I think if we can even do the bulk side of it and have that out there, I think Tyler in his presentation talked to you guys a little bit about that from the general, I mean, side of things. But I think that will be a good thing. Um, Troy does a good job. I'm managing the, the vehicle fleet along those lines on it. We did have, um, uh, a deputy or a couple deputies responding to a, um, emergency situation. An individual pulled in front of him, so banged up a squad car here a while back. But, uh, you're going to have that in our line of work. So I mean, it's, it's something, they had the emergency lights on, the sirens on, saw the subject, uh, um, hitting his brakes and thought he was pulling off the side, but didn't happen that way. But, uh, for expenses like that, I mean, we don't like to see them. We reduce them. Lisa and Jeff talked a little bit, you know, on the workers' comp side of it. I think we've done a very, very, very good job at our, at the sheriff's office in terms of those things. And we try to keep those costs down.
Very good. And on the, uh, on the jail side, I know we did a considerable amount of ARPO work.
Yes.
To jail.
Still, still going on. Yeah, fabulous. Uh, Chris has been great to work with on that. Both Andrews on the IT side of it, uh, they, I probably, both Andrews and Chris spend more time out at our facility than they probably like to. Because it's, uh, obviously there's a lot of maintenance, um, that goes on out there. There's a lot of the IT side of it that goes on. They've been doing a fabulous job for us out there along those lines. And we're thankful to you guys for those, those updates and expenses that, uh, by dedicating some of that money, I mean, whether it be courthouse cameras or things out at the jail, um, it's definitely going to prolong the life of that facility. So we're glad you're making investments in that.
Okay, very good. Very good. Thank you. Anything, anything else you'd like to note?
No, if there's questions, no, like I said, uh, um, it's pretty cut and dry in regards to those, what I put in, uh, for the budget side of it. I, I hope that you consider that. I mean, I, I hope that we don't have many reductions or different things for that staff side of it. Like I said, they're doing a fa- fabulous job on it and I'm very supportive of that.
Board, any questions for the sheriff?
Jason, I got a question. Um, just in regards, I don't see a line item for the bonus. Did you, I mean, we, you know, we had put in, we discussed before.
I just absorbed that. Yeah, I just absorbed that on the salary side of it.
Okay. I guess I would kind of like to in the further future, so we kind of know what you are using for bonus. It would be nice to be able to have an item, so then we can.
Jake, can we add that or how, how would that happen?
Signing bonuses?
Yeah, sign-on bonuses.
All right.
So, so that's a, just came through the regular salary line. So if that would be the case, they would have to establish a chart of account for that similar to sick leave. And when they turn that payroll in, it would have to be specifically noted to use it different than their normal salary line. So, um, I think we could do it, but we'd have to go through that separate process to make that show differently on your budget as you use.
I don't, and I don't have a problem with it, but the.
Just, it's just so we can, it, just so we, you know, we see how it, you know, where it's, um, you know, we've talked about it up to the amount. And, uh, just, just, yeah.
Well, I think utilization. I mean, Sheriff, when you, when you talk about staffing, retention, those items, uh, signing bonuses become a tool.
Oh, no question.
To use that. And I think.
That signing bonus saved us a lot of money as an accountant.
Okay.
I mean, that, that was, and we got two great candidates because of it. It, the cost to train people, the cost to put somebody through the academy, all those extra costs that go into that, that was a very, very, very good investment, um, on our office to do that. The, the question I would have, or I guess the problem that may come into place, and maybe this is where Jake's coming with it. If we don't just take it out of that, that budget salary side of it and I just absorb that, if we don't use it, then it's kind of tied up. If I, if I create a new budget number and let's say I put twenty thousand dollars into that number, but we don't hire anybody in that year, I mean, is that?
General fund.
Well, it, well, it could be something.
General fund or?
Well, I guess I would say, Sheriff, what I, what I would do, what I've done in the past and in the private sector, Jake, you've got your salary line and just, it's a, now it's a footnote for the sheriff using bonus money or signing bonus money. And so either that can come from you, Jason, to say, hey, this year I used, uh, three signing bonuses, so fifteen thousand dollars or whatever that number is.
Sure.
And that just becomes a supplement to the report. If it's, if it's an accounting, if you got a great.
Again, it's just, it's a structure.
Yeah.
If, if there wants, it's just like sick leave. Some departments take sick leave out of their normal salary line and some code it to, it's simply blind, basically a project on it. It says sick leave. So it's done both ways. In this case, if that's something that wants to be turned in, it can, I believe structurally, I don't actually know what to key in, but, um, chart of account number would have to be a unique number to be established. Um, and then that would have to be used when that payroll is turned in with those hours or that, whatever that claim is. So, um, for payroll, it's not the, known, it's known not to be the normal payroll thing. I think I'm.
Yeah, I have a property. If it's something that makes it visible.
There's some way to make it visible. That's, that's what Kees is asking. So I think that's, you know, that's good.
And if I, if there's a different structure for that, um, then I get.
We can work together.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Very good. Good questions. Keyshawn, Steve?
Jason, I'm assuming that, I mean, you look at this, that the overall increase of the budget is six point three seven. So I can assume that it's probably because of those bonuses and, and fight the wages.
Yeah, well, yeah, what you, what you're going to see is, I mean, the, the, what I put it in for recommendation for my employees is going to be part of that. The, it's, it's wages. I mean, that, that increase that you're going to see in that is due to that rate, uh, that wage increase side of it. Jake does a very good job on, I mean, helping us with the fight, all the other sides of things that come into play or are all part of that. Insurance, the FICA, the, all that, the office is very good about that. But that's what you're going to see is those predictions for the wage increase. Cause obviously we have a union contract that is, hasn't been discussed or we, we haven't went through the contract process with the union. So there are estimates on that side.
That's a good point.
So the, uh, I guess I, I'm on the revenue side.
Yep.
It looks like you've had some, or anticipating some fairly good increase.
I am. So I'm glad you brought that up. I apologize for not talking about that.
I want to ask one question before you get in.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
On the weapons permits, on the carry, how much do we retain now that the state's issuing those cards?
I see, I hope Jenny Wilson is up there somewhere on the, uh, screen. And she, uh, Jenny, Jenny, Jen and Chad do a lot, oh, yep, so.
Hold on.
Oh, there she is. Can you answer Steve's question there?
Uh, yeah, let me just find the report here.
Jenny, Jenny Wilson, so Jenny, Jen and Chad are open at my front desk. They're in the civil department. So Jenny handles all the revenue aspect of it on those weapons permits and she'll give you a lot better answer than I can. That's a lot more.
Is it less?
So, so it's an interesting question. We, we have a lot of people that come into the office and ask. I mean, or with the, with the whole concept now on the open carry with the, I mean, you know, the aspect of constitutional carry with everything that happened last year. I thought we would have a, a lot larger decrease in the amount that we have coming in. Most people still want it. The, a lot of people that travel, I mean, to other states, different things. We see it, uh, it comes up and down. It's on a five-year cycle, you know? So when those, when that five-year cycle up for, if it's a vast majority of people, then we'll see a larger, uh, income coming in for that. If it's an off year, then sometimes that's down. But Jenny, can you answer a question? I mean, what do you think percentage-wise with the new law, what's your, what's your prediction?
Well, so far from July one of twenty twenty-one to today's date, um, we have collected, let's see here, just in weapon permits, about twelve thousand dollars. The state gets three thousand dollars of that. We have seen a decrease in people applying for weapon permits, just with the new carry law. However, there are still a lot of people that, um, are wanting to still continue to get the weapons permits. Just, you know, they carry, um, outside the state of Iowa with a state that recognizes ours. Um, or for the purpose of going and purchasing a weapon, um, they can use that weapons permit, you know, at the dealer and get their weapon right then and there. So, um, we have seen a little bit of a decrease since July one.
Is there confusion on when they come in, what states are reciprocal?
It was, but with that.
Is there confusion when they apply for a permit, especially if they want to go out of state? Do, do we, do we give them that information on which states are reciprocal, what Iowa?
The, a lot of times on, I can answer that for you, Jenny.
There's, I can hear you really here with my speaker.
No, the, the question was in regards to, uh, people when they come in wanting to know the reciprocity with other states. Usually a quick Google search. I mean, with Iowa firearms coalition or different things, a lot of those, um, gun organizations will have it right on that shows what states are reciprocal for it. So usually we can answer those questions on a quick Google search.
Then we always strongly recommend people to, um, contact whatever state that they're traveling to through to see if that state, um, recognizes ours.
Okay, well, that number is, is a lot longer than my favorite estate would be getting out of that. But that was my original question.
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, you're keeping, if I understood you correctly, you're keeping seventy-five percent of what you collect.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, according to the numbers, yes.
Well, it sounds, Michaela, you need to use that model. I like it. That would be good.
I have a question for you, Jason.
Sure.
Okay, so strictly talking, not your union side, your admin side. I see you have, and you know, you've increased yours to seventeen and a half percent. I'm not seeing that for your others. So I'm trying to understand where you're having that in your budget if you were. Cause if, if your chief deputy gets eighty-five and your lieutenants get eighty.
If you look, uh, you should be able to see it in regards to, let me try to find it here for you real quick. The eleven thousand series. So you'll see mine, maybe a few of my classes on.
Yeah, I see yours on page six.
Yep. Do you know Troy, what number or what page it's on real quick? Uh, as I'm looking through it here.
Eleven.
Page eleven? Yep, exactly. Page eleven. You'll see at the very, very top, that's where it shows the other side of it.
Okay, so this is all your?
Yeah, that's those lieutenants. Yep, so that, that actually, actually in that, uh, the jail administrator side of it is probably still at five percent because of the sheer number of jailers I have. But there's a, one of my detectives is on this here, so it just kind of evens over on that. But you'll have my chief deputy and two out of my three lieutenants are in that section and then my detectives in that.
So you, okay, so just so I make sure I understand, so you have your chief deputy at eighty-five percent, you have your lieutenants at eighty.
Correct.
And then what do you have?
Then the rest are at, that's to be negotiated by the union.
Okay, all right, okay. And you have three lieutenants?
Yes, I have myself, a chief deputy and three lieutenants. But what I'm saying is in that line item that you see there, I, I, if you want me to, I can move my jail administrator over into that to show that. But I just did it kind of as a wash because they're actually, since he's my jail administrator lieutenant, it's under the jail section.
Yeah, it's under the rule. Okay.
Yeah. So that's where, where like I said, that detective is going to make less than what that jail lieutenant is. But because of the sheer number of people, I left it at that five percent.
All right. And then I just have some questions, like you said, Steve, on the revenue, how you're coming up with.
Oh, yes, let me get to that. Sorry, Steve, I answered the question on the weapons side, right? So on the, there's, part of this is a prediction, but we just actually, with one of our vendors implemented, we're putting in tablets into the jail. So on the jail side of it, when it comes down to like, uh, the video visitation and different things, a lot of the jails across the state are going more to the tablet side of it that can be issued out to the inmates and back. They can do their FaceTime. There's restrictions, obviously, on not sending, yeah, not, not sending nudity or different things along those lines. But it's, it's a benefit to the inmates. It gives the inmates the ability to, uh, talk on those and it's also a revenue side of it. I mean, that comes into play. So it's a win-win kind of on both sides of it. But by issuing those tablets back into the jails, we're predicting an increase in that revenue aspect is what we're seeing.
The contracted law enforcement, it's up four hundred percent?
Let me draw, uh.
Page one on revenue.
Yeah, up to the ninety thousand there.
Yep.
So that's the contract with Melcher Downs.
Do you, do you have that secured? I mean, is that something that is confirmed?
That would probably be a, a more of a question for the mayor in the back of the room here. We have emails that they said they do want to continue with that, but, uh, I think their city attorney, um, is still working through that process.
Twenty eighty agreement.
Twenty eighty agreement, okay, all right.
So, yeah, so that, uh, that contract side of it, or what, I mean, I'm assuming it's seventy-two thousand, I think it's on that amount going forward on that.
Okay, so that's, so then plus your eighteen, okay. And I know this is on a different section, but you have one deputy under the court services, is that correct?
Daryl, correct.
Daryl, okay. And so all of his items are from that, okay.
That's actually, we used to have Randy Poyer now, now we have Daryl there. That is a fabulous asset that we have for, for the county there that, uh, you know, yeah, would I like to have more people out on the road handling calls? Yes. But for the resource and for having him there, it's fabulous. I wouldn't want to change that. I mean, because I, I think it makes people in the courthouse feel a lot more comfortable. Both, I mean, when it was Charlie and, uh, um, now Daryl, they're fabulous people, people, or people persons, I should say, that, uh, when they talk to the public coming in, um, pointing them in the right direction, they both do a fabulous job. So I would, I wouldn't want to see that go away. I hope that's not what you're.
No, I just, I just asked. No, I just wanted to make sure it was on, yeah, yeah.
It's Department Six, sometimes.
Yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah.
When we pay the, the, the lake patrol.
Contract, when, when the contract pays us.
Does the corps?
The corps.
I mean, do they balk on that one?
No, they've actually, they've been very good partners throughout the years on doing it. It's give and take on both, both sides of us, just for the fact that if they need something extra somewhere, we try to accommodate that. But they also understand if, if somebody calls in sick or whatever, and we have to put a reserve out there or different things, they just keep track of that and then we give them extra hours down the road. So they've been a very good partner. It's, I think it's a win-win for both of us.
So do we contract, do we contract at an hourly rate then to them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then each year, whatever, they propose a contract for us, we sign it, give it back to them. They've been very fair on it and been good partners.
An hour rate up to, up to that total contract number?
Exactly, exactly. And what, and what we try to do along those times is we take that, what they want to spend in regards to, and then we divide it by the hourly rate for the number of total hours throughout the summer. And what, sometimes it fluctuates on how soon in, let's say, April we start or how late we go into October, per se, depends on that dollar amount.
Right.
So I know we've talked about this before, um, but in regards to the Melcher Dallas contract and other contracts, are we looking at revisiting some of those other contracts, or where are we at with that?
I didn't.
Or where are you at with that?
So, so we're, we obviously, I, I, Terry's behind me here, but I thought we reached the agreement on that side, other than the paperwork from their city attorney. So we're in agreement upon that, Bussie, for the last hour and a half years, has been very happy with that. I guess on a budget side of it, I mean, if you feel we need more revenue or different things, and you say, hey sheriff, you need to go start negotiating this, as a budget thing with other towns, I, I would ask you guys on if that's what you really want to do. We haven't done that, we've had, we have, I mean, kind of the steady relationships with those, but it's, if you as three board supervisors in the budget side, say Jason, we really need to increase revenue, you need to go talk to them, or have them come to a meeting of board supervisors, I can reach out to them and have them come in, and if you want to do that.
Yeah, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's so much the increase in revenue, Jason, is, is that we want, I would like, any contract that's been out there for a number of years, we need to revisit the rate.
Okay.
And when we do a new contract, like we're doing with Melcher, and we've got an X rate, we need to make sure the other contracts conform to that same rate.
Okay.
So I would just ask that you take a look at that.
Sure.
From a pricing standpoint.
Yeah, per capita.
I can bring that back, I can.
Does that make sense Steve?
Yeah.
I can look and bring it back, is that, so my question is, is on how do you want, I mean, obviously the unincorporated versus incorporated towns. There's a, there's a difference on that, so I'm assuming the incorporated towns are who you're talking about. Because, yeah, because I, I had the question, I mean, so that's going to be the Mariusville, the Hamiltons, the different people along those lines, but if they're unincorporated, it's not. I had actually asked this question to the previous sheriff in regards to why, kind of, the question, why are we having a contract with one town versus not another town? And in that conversation, it's because those towns previously had a police department. So Bussie used to have a police department, Melcher has, used to have a police department, different things, those other towns didn't. So that was part of the reason or the discussions that went into it. So, but, so regardless whether they add a PD or not, you want me, if they're incorporated, to go talk to the mayor or figure out, or what, I guess, how do you want me to approach that on a town, a very, very small town, that's never had a police department? That we now, we've always just throughout however many years provided that service. I'm, if I'm the mayor of that town, I'm gonna say, well, what changed that?
And that's where we, and I kind of, we had a chat before about this, is I don't think that we need to overcomplicate this. I think that we need to think about what are these towns requiring? And that's where, depending upon what Bussie is requiring of you, you know, if Melcher is asking of you so many hours, but Bussie's asking for you to whatever, and I'm not, and that's not here, yeah, and I'm not here to talk about what their hour, I don't want to disclose of that. But I'm just saying, I think that's how we look at it, because if Mariusville wants something, you know, smaller or larger, that's, I mean, as the sheriff, and I think we talked about before, that's a, you need to communicate with them on that.
So my question is, I have done that, so I'm, I'm where I think I need to be. But what I'm hearing is from you that that's, you would like to see, I, I mean, I'm comfortable where we're at, for those reasons that the previous sheriff said, but if you want me to open those lines of communication again with those um incorporated towns that we've never, I mean, that never had a police department.
Did you have a contract with?
The two towns that did.
Yeah, that's where I'm talking about, I'm talking about those, yeah, just visiting with them and what you're, what you're charging, I mean, that rate is, what? Two thousand and six, I believe?
Oh yeah, it was actually, I think it was when your, when your dad was the sheriff, it's quite, yeah, it's a old rate, so I think, I think you can go talk to him and.
Yeah, and I agree with Keisha, I mean, just, and then I think because we also signed those agreements, you know, because I think I signed the agreement with uh Melcher, at least I thought my name was on that. Just come back and tell us, hey, I've reviewed this, I've talked about this, this is the rate that it should be.
Okay, and then reach out or talk to them, okay? I'll do that for you.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
But I, just clarification, it's the towns that we have a contract with?
Yes.
And making those rates comparable, not so much going to towns that we never had a contract with?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I got it.
Agreed.
That makes it easier in regards to knowing you just go into one, one mayor and one city council versus all the others.
No, agreed.
Okay.
And then in regards to yesterday and the compensation board amount, you had stated that you would take that from your budget, is that correct?
Yeah, if it's something where, I mean, I, I asked the question, clarified with Terry, my name, when he did his whiteboard presentation, I think it was as the board, uh, or to the board as what I presented originally. But if you're telling me, is it just me, is it my staff, is it other, the other elected officials? That I have to try to absorb, or what, what are you looking for, or I guess, what is it that, yeah, nobody wants to cut the budget, but I'm a man of my word, and it's something where I will, if you say I have to take X amount of dollars out of it, I mean, I'll do that.
You know, you, obviously you have your lieutenants, you have, I'm your chief deputy already in your budget, yep, that's already absorbed, you know, so it would be that difference, to me, that's, that's how I feel. And we're removed out of, because we're not giving ourselves.
Okay, where, where I, I understand what you're saying, where I don't think that's fair, is what would be the dollar amount that you would already give an increase to myself, that chief deputy, those lieutenants, and then I see it would be the difference?
Yeah, it'd be the difference.
So what percentage would you like me to use that you would have gave us on not the seventeen, but on what would have you gave, and if I take that dollar amount out, then I see that's what I need to pay you? Is it, no, that's, I mean, I, I think that's better.
I mean, I'm not, I don't want to rehash and get, I'm not here to get in an argument, I mean, you know, he is a boss voted, and it was, but you had just made stated, if it's a problem, take it out of my budget, don't hurt the others.
Yeah, and, and I mean that, but, but, but just please clarify, what, what?
So when I, when I made the motion at the point, the sixty-five, is that what you're saying, the sixty-five percent?
No, 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 not on the sixty-five, I'm saying, I'm saying if.
Of that number, Keisha, what would you like to bring it down to?
Yeah, I'm saying, if, if you would have, if, if we, if the comp board had never even met, and you were to give me a raise, the chief deputy raise, the lieutenant's raise, whatever that dollar meant would have been already there, that's not because of the comp.
Right, and I agree, I agree.
But my difference is, is what, the seventeen percent what the comp board recommended.
I, I get your point.
Yeah, you know what my point is, what, whatever.
It's the net difference.
Yes, the net difference, and whatever that is, and I just don't know what to take that net difference off of to do that, oops.
And we haven't had those discussions yet.
Yeah, so that's, I, I will do that, but I just don't know what target you want me to do.
What I would suggest on that, because that's something I'm interested in too, Jason. We'll have time next week as a board to think through each budget line item, especially on the salary line item. So I would suggest that we'll come back with some, probably some revisions, or some suggestions Jake.
That's a fair point, yep, yep.
And, and I mean, I think, I think that's true for everybody, it's not just, it's not just Jason, it's everybody.
I, I know where we're running at on average.
Yeah, okay.
As, 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 as a county, I know, I know where we're at there right now.
I understand, and that, and I, and I will, I'm a man of my word, whatever I need to reduce, I mean, above and beyond that.
What I would, what I would think about, Jason, is at least probably two percent.
Reduction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Start, start with that as a framework, as I, as I just did the rough math myself.
Yeah.
And then, but we, we'll think about it over the weekend, look at your books, and then we'll come up with some ideas next week, we have a meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, and you had mentioned yesterday, or one of these days, uh, this week, to have an item on there regarding budget discussion?
Absolutely, absolutely, and we can do some cleanup on that as well, does that sound fair?
Nope, that's fine, yep, yep.
Oh yeah, I think I discussed it enough yesterday, but.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
You know, trying to, trying to be fair to everyone.
I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, and I, like I said, I was willing to do that, and I am willing to do that. I just want to know what that target is that I have to hit, I obviously don't want to go more than what I have to, but I, I mean.
And that's a fair request.
Yeah, I, I will, I will do that for you.
Very good.
Um, last thing too, on just, when talking about revenues and comes, or unless you get set other questions.
Steve, did you get your revenue questions?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm doing that.
Keisha?
Yep, yep.
Alright.
The only other thing too, just uh what, obviously what ebbs and flows, different things is jail populations, I mean COVID, I mean, issues in regards to that, I mean, you see some numbers down, Warren County's in the process of building a new jail, you have that side of it and different things, so we just need to be, um, I'm just saying, be conscientious of those things that, that, it's hard for me to tell. I mean, if our numbers go up, if our numbers go down right now, we're right around, I mean, probably just above thirty for an uh average daily population of inmates, sometimes that's higher.
That's, that's the problem with this whole process, Jason, if I had a crystal ball, I'd know the answers all right.
Exactly, so, but I just, I, I just sometimes would, if, yeah, if a lot of people come to jail, then that's higher. If, I mean, people don't come to jail, then it's lower, I mean, along those, we do the best we can to estimate that on different things, but.
I totally get that, yeah.
That's fair.
Anything else, other questions, or thank you.
Steve, Keisha, anything else with the sheriff?
No.
No, I think, I think we've, we've hashed her out a lot.
Thank you.
Very good, Jason.
You need anything, let me know.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks Jason.
Yep, you bet.
Two thirty, I think we have Carlos.
It's two o'clock. Is, so, just, so just take a look at your books, especially that line item on Jason, and come up with what you think that number would be. And I think if you start with a two percent reduction, it's going to get you close, but you may want to do a little bit more.
Overall, you mean like his total?
I'm looking at his total, I'm just saying a two percent reduction out of the total.
Yeah, okay.
Are you talking about, what, giving, taking him a number to look?
Yeah, yes.
You know, I have, I'm wording, it's probably going to be more than two, probably going to be more than two.
Well, his overall budget is like, his overall is four, yeah.
Yeah, not in the overall, if it is, then we'll have to, we'll have to regroup Steve. So, so again, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, the total number.
Yeah, okay.
So, can I, before I.
Chair.
Yes, Ed, I'm sorry.
I don't want, I don't want to be out of word anyway, but just to follow, we're doing some research that was asked to be done today. Jake, do you know, and I'm assuming we're still in the general concept of budget discussions as a whole, so I don't want to be out of line based on your agenda, but does Marion County have, or has it created a library district? Or does it have a Marion County Library Board? That we, you folks have identified members of a library board?
Do you mean, uh, I don't know, do you mean a singular board over the entire county?
Yes.
Not, that I'm aware of, the Marion County makes an appointment to the Pella Library Board, or a recommendation thereof.
Right, I'm just trying to verify, when we have given checks before, have we given the money to the Marion County Library Board that then distributes the money? Or do we just send a check to the Pella Library, Melcher Library, Pleasantville Library, separate checks? Or do we send one check to Pella, and they give it up themselves?
The individual allotments from each county year goes directly to each uh library and actually um like, or city, depending on how their structure is, like in Melcher Dallas, it goes through the city, the library doesn't have its own, it, I'm, so each individual one.
Okay, thank you very much, that will help us as we continue to do some research, thank you.
Thank you Ed.
Very good, thanks Ed. Any other item, before Carla is on at two thirty, we can talk about anything, we've kind of covered a lot of our ground, Jake, do you have anything?
I didn't, I mean, unless you guys want, we're going to revisit individual departments. From the overall structure we're set, I just need to know when we can.
So Tuesday will, Tuesday will, will uh kind of finalize all of those pieces and?
I mean, I, I have to go back and adjust like the supplemental living changes, things like that, then.
But we're ahead of the curve.
From the big picture, yeah, we're good.
And your timelines are going to be good?
Yep.
Would that be Tuesday after a regular meeting, or?
We're just making, we're just making an agenda item on the regular.
Because I thought we just kind of talked about doing something on Monday, did I hear that wrong?
I, I was thinking, and then I forgot we had a regular, no sense in, incurring the notice cost.
Doing straight.
Maybe we just need a break.
You, you can only take so much of us, right? It's alright, it's all good. All good. She's maybe waiting, she generally brings her commission.
I think her commission's coming and they're planning on being.
Well, we can do a, we can do a break for twenty minutes until Carla's ready, and so is there a motion to uh enter into a recess until Carla's here?
Yep, make motion, go into recess.
Second.
Till two thirty, I should say.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye, very good, thank you, we're in recess.
I was going to say, I need to take a break, is that appropriate?
Either way, slow, I, all COVID.
Alright, we are recording.
Alright. Very good, we are back. Is there a motion to reconvene?
I'm moving reconvene.
A second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Alright, very good, we are back, last department on Friday.
Oh geez, I've been on the last, a lot of pressure.
Lots of pressure, lots of pressure, Dave, alright. Carla, welcome?
Welcome.
So uh if you want to just give us kind of a high level, what you got in budget, I know you've got some handouts here, thank you.
Yep, I thought we'd do a quick review, and then set, talk a little bit about the goals and special projects we have for next year, and the targeted increases, so.
If you don't, and if you don't mind, I'd like to make it kind of interactive, so if the board is coming across something, and they say, hey, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
That way, I think it'll flow better with your, with your presentation.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're going to start with kind of a twenty twenty-one recap, it's a little hard for us, because the calendar year and our fiscal year don't quite always sync up, so we tried to do a kind of a recap. Um, as you know, we've had our four connect meetings. We started out March of last year with kind of a state of business uh report that we did. Uh, in July, we featured the quality of life projects, and in October, um, had one focused on the upcoming legislative issues. And just um last week, had one on infrastructure and funding opportunities for businesses. We'll continue those uh next year, the next one is March twenty-fifth. So if you have any agenda items or programs or things that you'd like to have us put on that program, um, I have not yet started working on that agenda. But those seem to be a good way, the other thing that I'm going to do, um, hopefully when we get done here, um, is to also share the PowerPoint from the connect meeting um in our news on our website, so that folks can, um, who are subscribing to our e-notified, can also look through all that PowerPoint, because there were some uh folks that wanted some of the information from the revolving loan funds, so that way we'll make it available to people. Next web information, it's been a heavy web year, of course, last year we started out with helping with the county site. Uh, we have since redesigned the economic development portion of our website, and that is live. We continue to refine that, we're working on some additional things for a couple areas, but the big thing we're working on right now is redesign of tourism information, and that portion of the website should be live, I'm guessing, in the next, within the next month. Um, we are close, but we still got quite a bit of work to do, we're doing an interactive map portion, um, that if you go to see Nash is very similar to that, uh, which is Nashville's website. Um, and so it'll be cool in the fact that people will be able to, on the map, um, click on what they want to know about, whether it's restaurants, or whether it's things to do, they can filter on the side, add it to their trip, and when they go over the pin, it'll also pop up with either a photo or video. So um a, a good opportunity to kind of make our tourism site a little more interactive and useful for the visitors. So that should be um up and running, like I said, somewhere in the end of February first to March. Any questions on the web stuff?
Nope, no, thank you.
Okay.
Excited to see it.
Yeah, it, it is working well, Brian has been wonderful to work with, and like I said, I just approached him yesterday about, um, we, we wanted to, we came up with the idea to, to offer another way to enter the Red Rock Startup Contest, and so he's doing a form for us, and he said he could have it done in two days, so we're very excited that we can get that done and have that turn around to also offer people, so if they, they're not comfortable with video in order to enter the contest, they can fill out a form. So that's wonderful relationship to work with, so we've been very pleased there. Talent, we're working right now with Iowa State University's Cirrus Program on an Iwin, we, we just got the report. Uh, the commissioners will review that on Wednesday. What that's focusing on is the fact that um there is no new people, and it's looking at different target groups, and what we can do to both remove obstacles and to help market to. So for instance, one example is out commuters, people currently living in Marion County that are going to other places to work outside of the county. People currently living in Marion County that are going to other places to work outside of the county. What can we do to encourage, remove obstacles so they stay here and find employment? Another group might be females, um, that maybe childcare is an obstacle. Or it could be disabled, um, there's a lot of folks with disabilities that some reasonable accommodations will help get them back into the workforce. So we're looking at some of those various different groups, it might be part-time people, um, that are currently not working that might work part-time. And so we're trying to work with our employers to figure out some strategies to look at the obstacles and also look at the marketing of how we're getting to people to see if we can grow our workforce by the people that are kind of around the region. And so that's a very, ISU, uh, Cirrus received a grant from that, so we were selected because we volunteered to work with them. And it's been a good start of our relationship, I know our employers have, especially our major employers have been engaged in the conversation. The other thing that we did last year was we honored ten, top ten under forty, and just this morning, we reviewed thirty applications for this year's top ten under forty, which is, um, a very exciting thing to see so many amazing young professionals in the area and have so many nominations. It was a difficult decision this morning to read through, um, the executive committee read through them and they'll be recommending to the full commission on Wednesday, the ten for this year, so, exciting for that program. We, our new website tells their stories better, so you can click on their picture and you can hear their stories and we hope to do even more social with, next year with the site now that we have the new site. So, um, excited for what that can mean for people to see themselves maybe in some of our top ten young professionals and encourage other folks to move here and be part of our communities because of how our young professionals are doing amazing things. Lastly, under talent, I have the Red Rock Leadership Program, I know you're familiar with it, we took a year off during kind of twenty twenty, twenty and twenty-one, and so we started the program again in twenty-one in the fall. We have twenty-two in the current class, they have two more sessions to do. So we just, the other night, we're at Pelacorp focusing on business, uh, we'll be in Pleasantville, um, this month, uh, focusing on education and workforce, so. Uh, and then one more, uh, in Knoxville on tourism, so, program's going well, we have a good class. Any questions on talent? Next, moving to tourism, uh, we completed the Red Rock Travel Guide, a little bit there with the cost and the revenue. We have the travel guide, uh, printed, but we also have the guide online. We're working with Brian to enhance how we have the travel, travel guide online so it can be a flipbook instead of a PDF file that you scroll. So that'll be a new enhancement, um, to the new travel guide and also, uh, you'll see in the budget, a little bit of an increase. Uh, we did not quite print as many last year because we knew, um, potentially travel, travel was kind of still in a question last year. So now we're kind of ramping back up, hoping that travel will continue back to the numbers of pre-COVID. Uh, our Best of Red Rock Contest, we had a thousand two hundred votes over this year. The winners will be announced in April at Cordova Park. And, uh, this year's, uh, Best of Red Rock Contest featured four top ten lists and sixty-five categories. We may kind of revise that a little bit for next year, um, and have maybe perhaps some more top ten lists and a little bit less categories focusing more on tourism. Uh, and that will also live on our new website, and so there'll be a slightly new way of how the contest will function on the new website, but it will still basically be the same.
Have you ever thought about, and I, I don't know, maybe you do this currently, but on your contest, like putting out something like that for a survey of some sort and letting some people select, because, you know, sometimes we hear feedback, well, there isn't that category, or there was only, you know what I mean? Trying to let them, you know, maybe get that vented out, you know, so that, um, we wouldn't necessarily have that, so.
Yeah, I know one of the things that I want to do, um, as we're kind of reevaluating the contest, is focus it more on tourism. Because that's where it came out of, that's what it was for, it was meant to be a help for when the chambers or the attractions get somebody in their front door and they say, hey, where can I go to get a great cup of coffee, or where can I go to get, to have dinner with my kids? And we don't like to recommend, um, so we'll give them the travel guide that has everything listed. But the Best of Red Rock kind of helps provide some ideas that otherwise, um, we as staff don't want to recommend.
Okay.
Um, so, so, we're going to try to focus it back onto the tourism categories and tourism
because that's where it's going to live, it's going to live. It may mean sometime down the road that we do something more as an economic development business kind of thing, that might be a different program. But I think that's one of the things, but certainly, um, we could put some feelers out, like I said, we haven't, we're just starting the conversation of what the twenty twenty-two contest will look like.
Okay.
As far as business, um, the, I'm kind of doing them in the order of what a business is. The new program that we just launched, um, beginning of January is the Red Rock Startup Pitch Contest. We've been working with our partners for the last three or four months prior to that, uh, to pull the pitch contest together. We used to, many years ago, have a Dream Big Grow Here Pitch Contest, uh, for entrepreneurs and startups to encourage that. That statewide program went away, so our local program went away, and so we've kind of used some of the best practices that we learned with that. We're very happy, um, the Gathering Ground offered their facilities for the event for free, um, which was very kind of them to do. Our partners have put forward some of the money for the prize, so, um, we're very excited. So right now, we're just waiting for entrepreneurs to submit, um, their ideas and dreams, and so we'll have round one judges, um, that will, um, kind of, if we have to eliminate some or get us down to a reasonable amount for a pitch event. I would certainly encourage and invite each of you to mark April seventh on your calendar, it would be wonderful if you could attend. Part of our strategy was how we entered into this, is we looked at doing an angel investor network and then looked at all the legalities that are around that. And we decided that one of the things we're going to do with this event is make a concerted effort to encourage those folks who we know as angel investors, um, our financial folks, to come to the event to make connections with the entrepreneurs as a more informal way of connecting our entrepreneurs with the people that might be interested in investing in new businesses.
Okay.
So that's, uh, been a wonderful program. The next program, our Economic Gardening Program, uh, that was a pilot project that we did with, uh, three stage two companies. So these are entrepreneurial type companies that have been around, they've been established and they have that potential for growth, and so they have been working through us with the National Center for Economic Gardening. Uh, two of the companies are completed, the other one, Heritage Lace, will complete out next week. And what it provides them is the type, type of research and analysis that larger companies like a Pelacorp or Vermeer or Three M already have in-house. But it provides us smaller companies with intelligence on their competition, on sales and, and those types of things to help them. And it's really customized with what the CEO needs to know in order to grow the company. And you can see, uh, low on the slide, two of the quotes from two of the companies that have completed the project so far. In addition, uh, we are talking with the Lieutenant Governor's Office and Empower Rural Iowa with the potential of taking this program statewide and what it could mean for the state to be a partner in this. So that's one of the things that we've, um, continued to advocate for. So it will help our businesses because it'll increase the pot of money that may be available for them to participate in the program. Of course, we've continued our business retention and expansion visits and understanding what's important to our employers. We will be, um, doing an annual report again in March. We did have Layley and Vermeer, we're both recognized on, uh, January twentieth by the partnership for their economic impact and their expansions. But we have several of our other, um, manufacturing employers that are either having expansion plans currently or in the process of planning for those. And the final area in business development that we're working on is succession planning. Uh, we have worked with the same partners that we worked with the Red Rock Startup, looking at not only when a person is ready to sell their business or get out of their business, but also the challenge that we've learned with COVID when maybe tomorrow, somebody who is healthy and forty years old owning a business is no longer alive. And, or an accident happens, and so trying to encourage our businesses because we knew when we did our employer call visits with our prime bigger companies, thirty-eight percent of them did not have a succession plan. That, that compares to fourteen percent statewide. So we knew that if our bigger employers were at a fairly high rate, did not have a succession fund, certainly our smaller employers did not. And so what we're looking at now, working with you and I with, uh, Advanced Iowa, is to bring a webinar to the area that would be both a taped webinar and an in-person webinar that, um, kind of gives the lay of the land, kind of the beginning thinking of doing succession planning. And then, uh, working together as local partners to pull some of the best practices that we found for some type of workbook that businesses could download and do at their own pace, um, on their own to help them start the process. And then finally, connecting back with our partners like Advanced Iowa and others like ESPN C to provide them that one-on-one connection for how that business moves forward. We know nobody wants to go to this seminar on succession planning because then everybody else is saying, hey, they're going to sell their business. But we know that those tools are not, there's a lot of them across the state, but they're not being used, and so we're trying to find some ways to build better connections with our businesses. In business attraction, we've continued to take our targeted industry information and put those into tear sheets as well as accounting profile. Uh, we've worked a little bit of discussions with our local partners about how lead flows happen. And one of the things you'll see for next year that we're going to work on is trying to identify the top four, six sites and doing some more, um, deep dive into the, the stuff that we have to promote them, such as drone video of the sites and just mapping and some different things that we currently don't have, or like top sites for industrial development and commercial development.
Okay.
So that's one of the things that we're kind of working on, the business attraction side.
Are you thinking of, I mean, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's good.
So are you thinking more rural, are you thinking working with some of these smaller community, I mean, both, what, what's your?
Right now, we haven't quite figured out the parameter.
Okay.
But a lot of it would be with acre size, you know, we're, uh, one acre site, we're probably not going to spend a lot of resources towards. But if we can find bigger sites, because that's what most of the companies and the leads that we're looking for.
How, how many acres are typically they looking for?
I would say minimum ten.
Okay.
Maximum, five hundred. You know, so, but, but really, that if we have those fifteen to fifty.
As I say, I wondered if those.
Those, those are really the heart of it, and so those would be the ones that would want to put the resources behind because we know those are the ones that are going to have the greatest potential, um, to really bring in a significant, um, employer. So, right now, if you look at some of the other competitors, the other communities and places we're competing with, they have beautiful packaged, uh, drone video and mapping and all those kinds of things on their sites, and we just don't have that. And so we're looking at, working with our partners and seeing how we can pull those together to have, you know, we can't do it for every site. We don't have the budget to do that for every potential site, but can we pick like six and really do an ace job of figuring out how to promote those six and then hopefully, once somebody takes those and you move on to the next ones?
Great, thank you, appreciate that, excited to see that.
The next is just, infrastructure is just kind of, we continue to receive requests for information in all those areas. Uh, the broadband side is finally done, hallelujah. Uh, it took it a long time to get done and especially the maps. Now we'll move into the next phase of pulling together a local steering to committee, uh, to look not only on the report and the policy side of it, but also the maps and figuring out how to better build partnerships with our providers, uh, figuring out how we can go and access funding and what makes sense in these different areas, but until we got the maps done, it really, we really didn't have the data we needed. And we just got those done, not this week, but last week, so that's kind of the next step there.
The, the sixty-three business requests, Carla, is it a fair assumption that that's a combination of existing businesses and new businesses or?
Most of those are all new, are existing businesses, those are, oh, I didn't put the number of leads in there, I could, oh, I could give you that number too, that's a different number. Sixty-three is existing businesses that are calling us up, needing things.
Okay.
And that could be, you know, it's a, it's from A to Z of what they need.
Right, right.
Any other questions? Next, moving on to our goals for next year, um, first goal, um, under diversify the economy, you can kind of see, um, some of, some of the things we have there, which are continuing some of the projects we just talked about. And then there's a little bit deeper dive into both Red Rock Startup, some of the things we plan to do to enhance that program as well as succession planning. And then if you flip over to the next one, our goal there is dealing with the attraction and retention. And like I said, some of the things that we have in our plan there, uh, we have talked about as we've gone through where we're at and what we're working on right now. Like I said, it's hard because we're halfway through the year fiscally and so it's kind of hard to figure out an annual report sometimes. The next goal is enhanced place, and one of the things is obviously the broadband and getting the website connectivity. And one of the things that we're going, want to go after and seek this year, both for the videos for the tourism site and the videos for the economic development site, is we know there's some grant funding there that we can, we can leverage, uh, to help us with those resources. And then just helping our local communities and the projects that they're working on. And you can see, um, a little bit about the video content and the tourism web information, some of the things we're working on. One of the things in the tourism, um, portion that we're going to really help drive our site is blog. We are going to start doing a blog, which we, I have not done yet with our site, so we will have that, and that will not only drive content on the website, but content socially. Uh, when we did the Red Rock Startup, um, our Facebook post, I think now is over two thousand five hundred likes. Our LinkedIn post for that is over two hundred and fifty, so trying to figure out how to use those social tools that don't cost us really any money, but do cost time, uh, to get things out there, so we hope to continue that with the blog. Using the content, especially from the Best of Red Rock Contest, for things like the top ten under forty to help drive that blog content. And broadband, um, kind of just a little bit about, um, the targeted requests, um, you can see there, um, we are a department of one, but I have nine commissioners who help guide, and I have David here with me today, and I believe I have at least one of the other commissioners online, so we appreciate those nine citizens who step forward and help guide the work that we do. You will see from the comparison of the Professional Developers of Iowa, which is kind of the Association for Economic Developers, about fourteen point nine percent of their membership serves a similar population to us. As far as budget, about sixteen point two percent have a budget in the similar range as ours and twelve percent have a similar salary. PDI's comp, membership is really mostly, over fifty percent comprised of county economic developers. And you can see the breakdown for the other types of economic developers that are in that membership as a point of reference. In addition, uh, provided the in, information comparison for ISAC of where the average is for economic developers at the county positions as well as some peer comparisons, and then where, uh, we are. This year, in the salary portion, uh, was submitted to six percent, partially because last year I did a two percent and then you, I was given a three percent and that kind of, when you're a one-person department, that really messes up fun too. So, it's better to be over than to be under, um, because I hate to have, luckily, I think we're going to be okay because I overestimated healthcare. So I don't think I'm going to have to have a budget amendment just for that difference in that budget of what the, the difference of two percent to three percent was. If you look, uh, down below, you can see kind of a, grouped our budget in a slightly different way, you can see where we were this current fiscal year to next year's request, uh, as far as grants, as far as salary programs and then benefits, and what those differences kind of break down in those pots, which is a little different than how you have it in your printout. Looking for anticipated decreases, we, um, have made the decision to, um, exit the Opportunity Squared Region, the region, um, which is around a tonwa. Partially because they were moving forward with marketing initiatives with Indian Hills. We are not part of Indian Hills and Indian Hills was not interested in having us be part of Indian Hills marketing. So, part of it was just, the things that we do, we do on our own with DMAC. So we do the Teaching for the Workforce Program, but that we do with DMAC on our own, not with the other counties. So there was a lot of things that we used to do with that region that are no longer in existence, we used to do the labor sheds with that region, now the state does the labor sheds. And so it just became, um, a way that we felt like, with the new Economic Development District, which I'll talk about in a minute, that that was a better, um, usage of our funds than the Opportunity Squared Region. I also anticipate some reductions in mileage just because I'm going to a lot more Zoom call meetings and a lot less in-person meetings, so I reduced that by some. I think after this year, we'll have a more normal, uh, idea of what that's going to be moving forward, so I, I did put a small decrease in there, as well as a decrease for our web, some of our web costs because of the web, um, being all together now. And also some IT equipment reductions because I no longer have a printer in my office, I just use the copier. So there's no need for that expense for cartridges and that kind of thing. As far as increases. As far as increases, the major increases are salary and benefits. But in addition, like I said, a slight increase for tourism print, guide printing. And then the other one that I did put in here, I know you've received communication from the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, which is the new Economic Development District. I did put that money in our budget for this year and kind of won a discussion about that. If that's something that you feel that it's okay for us to move forward, they will provide us grant assistance. They are knowledgeable in federal grants. They will be hiring a person through this process in addition to what they have there at the MPO to allow us to be able to access that expertise when it comes to grant writing and grant research.
And that's about eighteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
So that would include all of that?
That would include paying the membership for Marion County. And what that means is Pella, Knoxville and Mulcher Dallas have already joined as municipalities. I believe Pleasantville will also, but they have not as of yet. I think he's still talking with Joe. And that would allow what they call the unincorporated Marion County. That's what the thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, if we wanted to move forward and include the other communities that are smaller, such as your Swan or some of the other incorporated, it's not that significant, so we could pay for those as well. But those are, it's fifteen cents per person is basically how the membership is comprised. So for some of those very small towns, it's, it's not a tremendous expenditure. So, but that's.
She's saying the EDDs would be helpful to your?
Yes, to her department as well.
So, because there could be grant writing opportu-, sorry, grant writing opportunities there?
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be for any project. If we do it basically for a Marion County project, that's, so if you went, like you were talking about trails, they could help us because that would be in the rural unincorporated most of it portion of Marion County. And if Knoxville's already a member, then that makes it just easier.
Pella's already a member?
Pella's already a member. So it makes those things easier. Most of the rest of the state, well, all of the rest of the state has an Economic Development District. We are the only portion of the state that did not. And we've gone through the process of creating that, creating the SEDS. What happens with some of the EDA money is one of the first questions they ask you on a grant application is, do you have a SEDS, which is a Regional Economic Development Plan? And before, we'd always have to answer no, which always puts you at a disadvantage for funding. Well, now we have a SEDS. And so now we're part of that. And the, the funding that we provide is then matched by the federal government to pay for the staffing. The other, you know, just additional needs, like I say, you know, we, we continue to look at grants and other opportunities. It seems like right now there's been a plethora of different grants being put out, both at the state and federal level. So the EDD will help us with some of those additional needs. You know, we, we may eventually down the road as we work with our partners, need some additional needs for business attraction, working with our communities to see where, what does that look like once we get the, the kind of, where we get the, the assets we need to go out there and market? Where are the places we need to go? Is there some other partnerships that need to be developed for that? And then the last thing I put on here is just, the business climate we're in right now, there's probably going to be some responses that we don't anticipate today that'll happen in the next twelve months. I can't tell you what those could be, but it seems like right now we're in a volatile position of things popping up that businesses are dealing with or that we may need to deal with. But those are just some things that could happen. That's why it's nice to have those special project dollars to be able to see if there is a specific need for something that might pop up.
Questions, board?
I have just one thing for you, Carla, in regards to the March twenty-fifth. I think we had made mention as a board, when Carla was gone, having Dustin Miller do his presentation. So on that March twenty-fifth, that would be good. You've already, the trails thing, yeah, if this EDD can help with possibly with some grant funding, look for that. Yeah.
So it sounds like there's a lot of aid first out there, Carla, as far as the businesses contacting you and?
Yeah, we have a great relationship with our existing businesses, especially our prime businesses. We focus mostly on, on the larger businesses. We let our chambers kind of be the front face for some of the smaller businesses. But, you know, trying to help them right now, it's a very exciting time when you look at the number of companies expanding and the challenges we have from workforce and that they are really engaged in wanting to work together. I will tell you, when I talk to other state agency people, they say not everywhere around the state do the companies want to work together to recruit. So I think that's a, a very positive thing that says a lot about our businesses. The other thing that we just started up this past week is the Employers Council. And that's one thing if anybody's on or that you can encourage. The Employers Council that's done through Iowa Workforce Development is a very easy thing to go to. It happens every other month over lunchtime, basically. And the topics vary depending on, you know, what the interest of the HR directors are. But it's a way that they can gain some knowledge, network with other HR directors in the region. So it's very valuable, especially for some of our companies, that maybe it's the owner that is doing HR and it's not their area of expertise and they can sit with some of our corporate people that are very refined and in narrow areas of HR and build some relationships. It's a wonderful thing. There's no cost to going to it. If you want to have lunch, you pay for your lunch. But it's a very interesting and, and interesting network that was going really well before COVID hit. And we've been kind of out of it for the last several years because so much of it is involved with networking. We just, the one we just had in January, we had four students from Central and they were talking to the employers about their perspectives on being recruited for jobs and what they were looking for in jobs. And they were very honest. I applaud the students for sharing things frankly about, we were really amazed at what they were, what they liked and what they didn't like. And I think the employers in the room learned a lot from those four students that were able to kind of share their perspectives. So that was kind of a more interactive one. I think the ones, the next two coming up are dealing with COVID kind of issues with HR. So that will be kind of interesting. I think one is dealing with the whole world now of hybrid and remote and all that kind of thing. And I forget what the second one is, but they're COVID-related kind of results. So just a wonderful network that we can help our businesses to connect to that really is just going to the meeting.
I find it, I find it kind of interesting that the, that the businesses would, are even looking at expansion when, when they're, when the other problems are aggravating even retaining what they have. I find that interesting.
There's customers out there that want to buy their product.
They don't have a choice.
I know, but they still got to have employees to produce those products.
Yeah.
Luckily, the, sometimes you sow the seed and you wonder what's going to happen. Well, we did the housing study a million years ago now.
It was fifteen or sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that now is Knoxville's developments, Prairie Ridge. She, Karen told me a number, but she won't text me back. It was that ninety-two lots in Prairie Ridge. I forgot what she said, but it's just.
It's like fifty-some that are.
Yeah, it's way over half already are sold. So just seeing that housing, I think right now.
But are those new people?
Well, they've sold and I'm not for sure how many of them are, you know, have been bought up, you know, as, as.
I think, I mean, the number that was needed, I think we're at forty-three percent of that number that was needed. So we're seeing, we're seeing that, that grow and.
At least it's a positive, it's a positive view.
That's right. Well, and even sometimes when local people build a new house and you think, oh, that's bad. Well, it's really not because the other house.
It opens up the other house.
Yeah, and sometimes those other houses are more affordable for young professionals than a new house being built. So it's not always bad. Any other, it continues to be needs for senior housing and, you know, it's been exciting some of the developments in childcare because that was also a stumbling block. We heard in the childcare study, parents saying, we're delaying having children or we're planning to have less children or we're spreading our children five years apart, all because of childcare. Or a mother that was pregnant and spent most of her maternity trying to figure out where the child was going to go when it was born. So we know those things hurt our employment and put stress on our families.
Yep, absolutely correct.
I'm excited to see the new websites. So, yeah, when those are fully launched and everything, let me know because there's an email, so I'd like to.
Yeah, and one of the.
And advertise, I want to advertise those. I mean, I think it's important that we get with our media and, and make sure that they know and.
And one of the cool things on the Economic Development Site, if you go to the top bar and go far over to the right, there's a tab called, I think it's Data and Research. So for you, when you're out and about with folks and they want to know the housing study or they want to know the childcare study or they want to know whatever, those are all underneath that tab. So you can just go to that tab and you can click down and find out the type of study you're looking for. And all of those studies are on there. We have also underneath there a dashboard that's data. So if you get people writing grants or doing things that need information, there's a lot of data under that tab as well.
With, with those, with those tabs, like, I'm going, I'm going to use childcare as an example. Do we, do we have a list of childcare providers that we can give to?
We do. That's also, that's under a different tab.
Under a different tab?
That's under the living here tab.
Thank you, Carla. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you, David, for coming. Thank you for those commissioners that are on.
Yep, we have Megan and Stephanie are on the line, I've seen.
I don't have any say for that.
Well, you know, I'm economics. Has there been any thought, Carla? A lot, a lot of the activity is business development related. Public policy is as much a driver to this as anything else. In the groups that you have, do you have anybody to help craft ideas, bills, legislation to help our legislators develop a more business-friendly environment in the state of Iowa? Because you can do all this stuff, but if tax policy's not right, if other policies at the state aren't conducive to business, it's, it's a struggle to grow. So is there, are there any groups like that?
From a policy standpoint, part of the reason we belong to certain organizations is because of what they do. Obviously, the Greater Quintrish partnership has staff working in economic development areas. We also belong to the Association of Business and Industry, which also have lobbyists and staff working in public policy areas, as well as our Professional Developers of Iowa, who also have staff. So we have several organizations that we belong to, that we get regular information from them about bills and tracking bills. And also each of them have a process through which they put their platforms together or their areas of emphasis that we participate in. And certainly, I will tell you with the, the Association of Business and Industry, there is an opportunity because of our membership. I can probably get one or two more people onto their information list. So if that's something that one or two of you would be interested in, I could hook you up with that as well. And then you get the same information that I get.
I think that would be very helpful, very helpful. Absolutely good. Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Any other questions for Carla?
I don't have any.
No, thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we will do some final items on Tuesday during our regular session.
I would like to talk a little bit about some salaries before we go, if we could. Those that are obviously not compensation. Because that's already been decided. I don't know if anybody else does.
I think Tyler was interested in that.
Yeah, what do you want to talk about?
I just tried to be here.
You should try to be here. So when I was looking at the budget as a whole, were kind of, the numbers that were presented to us. So some departments, my understanding, were told a three percent, so they allotted a three percent. And then we see it across the board. Some of them are four, some are five, some are six, some eight. And we have some that are as high as twelve. Looking at doing the, you know, in the past, we have done buckets. And instead of just saying, they have it in their budget, let them go. But I, I struggle with, we have some departments that took the recommendation that was given to them and they did that. And now one department is, is put in for a five or six and that department put in a three. So can we look at as a whole and say, these are buckets and it's your bucket? And give them that and go from there? That would be my thoughts.
Well, I don't, I, I, I like that approach. I really do. Right now, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I gotta run until if my number is correct. We're, we're setting it probably a four point seven average. For the aggregate.
And I think some of, like, I know Tyler's, your department, you put in five. Kim, you put in three. Okay. So our larger departments and some of the others, they put in five. You know, those, those being our largest departments, should we look at a bucket of dollars? Whether that be a three or four or five, six, whatever, you know, so.
All right, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying, Keisha. Are you?
The percentage.
Are you recommending a percentage that we should adjust all the departments to for a bucket?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So let's be, yeah, just want to be clear.
No, I do. I mean, I'm not, but I also want it to be an open discussion. I do think this.
Because we already, I mean, we do the bucket of dollars anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that's how we were.
That's the intent.
That was our intent.
That's the intent. How the manager does that is how a manager does that. But do you want to bring the average number, if it's about four point seven? Do you want to tell departments, go to five? Do you want to tell them, go to four point seven?
Yep, no.
Are you recommending a number?
Yes, I, I would be more than happy to make, when, when I review it, I would like it to be a bucket of, of five percent. And then the department head would look at that and have.
I'm, I'm kind of there too at that number, five. I had a minimum. I mean, at least we begin there. I, I'm kind of there.
He's okay.
Okay, back there, Jeff?
He's breathing, he's fine.
Well, I'll tell you this, that's part of what I was thinking we'd talk about on Tuesday. So I'm glad you threw that out there.
We'll still talk about it on Tuesday.
Why plan on it? Because I don't have a number in my head right now, so. So I think what I want to do is look at all the different recommendations from the departments. And for you, and come up with a, I think you're right. I think we come up with a, maybe a revised number that we put in there. There's a lot of variance between departments.
There is, yeah.
And we need to bring some, to rope that in a little bit.
A majority of them, when looking at them, I, I, I felt that a five. And I've spoke, you know, because like, I'm in a, Kim's department is being grant funded. I, you know, I reached out to her and I said, you know, is this something that you could, you know, do you have that in your budget to be able to do that? Because I don't want to restrain her. We said, I sat here and gave a suggestion and then she's over there going, but, but. It's my understanding, it, it, it could be, it could happen for you. Is that correct?
For us, if, if it's. For us, if, if we are given the opportunity to give our staff more, we would, we would make adjustments in our grants and, and buy less stuff and invest more in our people.
Right.
So it really shouldn't, it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect the ask of, you know, it's, it's just a matter of we, you know, are following the guidance that, that we're given. So, so if the guidance changes, we will be happy to adjust up.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate that.
Well, I think it's fair that my guy knows what we're thinking.
It's equitable, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Is that it?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Is there motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, McCombs?
Hi.
Brady?
Hi.
Turner?
Hi.
Thank you.